We'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I as Luton flag, a state of Mexico, is the invincible, perfect friendship among beautiful creatures.
Right, everyone? One time, Mrs. Turley, roll call, please.
Doctor Guy O'Shamper?
Yes.
Here.
Mr. Hameo?
Here.
Mr. Ortiz?
Miss Lee?
Present, we do indeed have a forum. And adoption of the agenda for this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda? And if so, what?
Presently, I, I do want to, I tried very hard to get us some guest presenters today for item A and item B. I received word over the weekend that neither of them could make it on a Monday night. They both have committed that they can be here on October seventh for our regular board meeting. So I would like to postpone items A and B until October seventh.
Thank you, sir. Board members, are there any other changes? Oh, guys being feisty already. All right, board members. Walter says we should send him home. Right? Oh, alrighty. Board members, their motion to approve the agenda as amended postponing items A and B until October seventh at our regular board meeting.
Also moved? Second.
Beautiful. Thank you, ma'am. It has been moved by Mr. Hameo and seconded by Ms. Daly to approve the agenda as amended postponing items A and B to the October seventh meeting. Any discussion, board members? During non-martial procedure roll call vote, Mrs. Turley, please.
Doctor O'Shamper? Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Hameo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye, the motion carries. Alright. Board members, moving from A to B and now C. Mr. Widener, would you like to begin, sir?
Yes. I included in your packets, um, kind of information that we've all been collectively working on for the formative evaluation. As you recall, in the spring, as a board, we voted on a time of the evaluation. The criteria is that we will do two formative evaluations. One in October at the first. You will complete the evaluation by the first meeting. And then you guys will gather an executive session in, in October. You'll gather an executive session and then you'll provide feedback to me at the second meeting of the month. So, um, we've come up to the first landmark on that, on that timeline. And so, um, I wanted to make sure that we had everything that we needed to be able to evaluate. Last meeting, at our meeting on the sixteenth, we, uh, we had, no, our meeting was on the sixteenth. Yeah, we, uh, we talked about rubrics. And Doctor O'Shamper had some really good suggestions for rubrics. Having rubrics that tied to the criteria. We talked about the shared drive. Um, and Isaac was gonna be here today to help with it. Isaac's another one that, that couldn't make it to the Monday meeting, but Isaac was gonna join us tonight and kind of walk you all through how to use the shared drive. Unfortunately, Isaac had a pregnancy, so, um, I do have the drive.
I'm gonna interrupt you for just one moment, sir. We have a guest that came in. Just so you know, our items A and B have been postponed.
Oh, okay.
They were not able to join us that will be at our regular meeting.
Okay.
Next Tuesday. They have, they have committed to that meeting.
Okay.
And so, we're, we're skipping A and B because it's gonna happen.
Alright.
Tuesday next week. And so, all we have left this evening, if you are interested in, in hearing everything going on, our talking evaluation instrument and timeline for this next month.
Okay.
Alright, that was, yes. We're very sorry about that. We, I got the emails this morning. I think Mr. Widener got them last night. That they weren't able to attend, so I apologize for that. I think we'll, we'll be happy to see you next week.
Okay, uh, probably all of you because I'm excellent.
Yeah, beautiful. Alright, we'll be so happy to have you next week. Sorry about that, Mrs. Lee. Thank you so much. You have a good evening and a safe trip back.
Thank you.
You thought you'd be here, huh? I did, I was like, yeah. So, so there are four items tonight for you to look through, peruse through, discuss. There, the first is the timeline. I, I wanted to formalize the timeline that we, we discussed in the spring with the attorney. And, and we outlined the timeline for two formative evaluations and a summative in the summer. And so, um, that's on the, that's on the timeline. The second tool is the rubrics that, Mrs. Lee and Doctor O'Shamper have both worked a lot on with me and input for me and kind of how can we document, how can we, how can we show evidence to support the criteria? And so, the second item is the rubric. And then the third item is a tool that I created a couple of months ago, kind of to score the rubric. And so, you can go through and kind of click on the numbers and, and where you rank me and, and it will help you to score, score me as you're all individually doing this. The last item is the shared drive. What we had on the sixteenth, I had a drive in my file that I had shared with you all. And, um, Mrs. Hunt Daly was having a hard time accessing that. And we talked about a, a flash drive for that. And, and I can have that for you, Mrs. Hunt Daly, by, um, by Thursday. I can get that for you Thursday night. And, um, and, and, and get it to you.
Would you be able to do it tomorrow? Oh, Ms. Daly is, is she in Albuquerque? Ms. Daly, are you still planning to attend tomorrow night, the region meeting?
No, I can't because of the weather.
Okay.
There's no way I can get off that early enough to make it to Alba- Albuquerque. It's gonna have to go all the way around through Max, the Coral, Berlin. I'll never make it.
Okay. I just was trying to think that Mr. Widener could get it to you tomorrow night.
I can get it ready for you.
If you can get it to, to, uh, Ms., uh, Ray at Laguna Akma, I can pick it up from her.
Perfect. I will, I will do that. Make sure that, that we get all of those files put on a flash drive for you.
Okay.
In the two weeks or the week and a half since our last board meeting, I guess it's almost been two weeks. Isaac has transferred everything from my drive to a shared drive that we all have. So you all have a, you're, you're the only folks that have access to it. And so, Chanda and I need to boot up, uploading some of the stuff. And, and we need to work on that, but, but you'll now have, you now have a shared drive. And all of these, the tool, the rubric, the timeline, they're all in that shared drive under superintendent evaluation. But, um, I can pull it up, we can discuss it.
Did you already, did you already submit it to us?
I shared it with you all today.
Oh, okay. So I didn't, okay.
Cause, cause what I did was, because it auto calculates, you each have your own. So yours is called WJ, Dr. Guy's is GA. And so, it's, it's your initials. And, and that's your tool that you can evaluate. So, um, we can pull those up, Mrs. Lee, if you, if you want to discuss.
Absolutely. Well, and I think one of the big things, I'm gonna piggyback on everything that you were just saying. One of the things that we, the board, asked of you was for you to be involved in the instrument itself. But I think most importantly, we, the board, talked about having ownership of the evaluation instrument. And I know I'm looking, it's right here, and we've got the big summative instrument printed. That's what the big, huge one is. And last meeting, we talked about, that's, he talked about, yes, that big heavyweight. We talked about, um, what we had approved as the formative instrument. And the discussion centering around that, just for the public certification, is that it is a shortened version of the summative instrument. But in that, we all determined that we needed to come up with a way that we can score fairly. And I think guys' word that we use the most to help us with that is objective. You know, not subjective. And so, Guy and I, as you mentioned earlier, have given a lot of suggestions and ideas for what could be used in that. And so, today, board members, what we're gonna be looking at is what Mr. Widener, um, took from, from Guy and from myself as far as ideas and kind of synthesized it into a really accurate way of us being able to score those, um, indicators that we all agreed on and approved as the instrument. But Guy, you know, you had asked multiple times to come up with some type of rubric, some type of way that we can measure what those indicators are, giving the key evidence and everything. And so, what this is that we all have shared and are in our books and in our drives is what Mr. Widener took to heart, I believe. And I, I don't mean to be talking for you, but I'll mean you should. But what I take it as is that he listened to what we all said he needed to do to come up with a way, a rubric and key evidence to be able to. And so, looking at it, I think that's what we all tonight need to determine. Are we gonna approve it like this? What changes do we need to make? Because we, the board, have to agree that we like the way the rubric is. We, the board, have to agree that we think that the evidence is appropriate for those indicators that we all already did approve. And so, that's really the, the purpose of having the instrument. So that for our action item after we're done with all of this discussion and decision-making, we can vote on what we approve or don't approve.
Do you guys work on this key evidence? Is that what you guys worked on?
Submitted, yeah.
Yes.
So, I gave him a chance to, uh, to throw in his, uh, two dollars worth. And that's what, uh, what I see just now.
Yes.
Is, uh, attempt to take the, the last, uh, draft of a, of a draft that includes, uh, breakdown on the evidence and also breakdown on it. Breakdown on the rubrics. And, uh, and then he's just explained that he, that Isaac, uh, extend that into a, a worksheet that, uh, that is, uh, we can, we can view. That's, that's pretty good. What I would like to hear from, uh, Lane is, is a review of the, of the, uh, the one that we just, that I just saw on the, uh, on your email. And it, it has the, and it has a nice logo on it. And it says, Grant Sibola County School Superintendent Evaluation. That's what I'm referencing right now. And, uh, and it has the part one and all that, sort of part two. So, what, uh, that's what I see. Uh, and so, that I understand is what we're talking about. And that being the case, then, what I would like to hear is, is what it is that, uh, based upon what we gave you, what did you do to this instrument? So we can all understand your, uh, your thoughts and your ideas of what it should, what, what it should, what it is indicating to us, especially the seven, seven, um, categories of forms.
Um, so, Mrs. Lee and Doctor O'Shamper and I were all working electronically. And we were sharing ideas for rubrics and, and criteria and then kind of talked about, okay, let's hone that down to maybe two or three things. And, and, you know, let's really look at the criteria that we can document. You know, if, if we say indicator one communicates with members of the board in a timely manner, you know, what is evidence of that? What, what, what do I wanna see to be able to, to rate him a four on the criteria, five on the criteria? So there, we would, I, we kind of talked about what evidence looks like. Um, that would be call logs, that would be emails between us, that would be updates, kind of like this morning. Emergency safety protocols, you know, are, are, are you aware when we have a school that, that isn't locked down or, or shelter in place? And, um, and, and so, are we, are our schools safe? You know, we, we talked about the, we spent a lot of money this year on cameras for our schools and, and uh, P A systems and that kind of stuff. And so, so we wanna make sure that, that you have what you need to be able to rate me on that criteria. So, um, I can go into each of the indicators. There's, there's, there's seven categories and there's two indicators under that, that we kind of narrowed it down to. And, and I can talk about what evidence will look like. Is, is that kind of good with you guys? And Emily, I'll, I'll be respectful of your time. I, you, you said you have till about six thirty?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to kind of brief through that. And, and, um, so indicator one is, I just mentioned, communication with board members. Do we communicate about board governance? Do we communicate about district budget, safety, security? And so, I would wanna make sure that in the drive, you have, you have the information on school safety and bratata and the emails and the communications and, and. And so, you're gonna wanna delve into that and see how, how you would rank me on the rubric.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh. Could you, uh, have this copy copy made available to all of us? So when it says, when you say two and three, then she will know that there must have been more than two to three.
Yeah.
And so, you'd want to see the whole thing. This is what, um, what, um, was given out to you guys. This is the one that I gave you.
Okay.
Okay? And then it did, and I assume that it was then disseminated to the rest of the board members?
No.
No, okay.
It was not. And the reason it was not was to avoid rolling quorum.
Okay.
Knowing, knowing Guy that we were gonna have the opportunity tonight to be able to discuss and share.
Is there any colored papers so that it can be distinguishable?
Yeah, I can copy it, like a light blue or something.
Something else, yeah, so that we aren't getting mixed up with, with what he's given us. Now what?
I have. I have what was in the packet. Um, so I'm pretty much seeing what you guys have.
Yeah.
Doctor O'Shamper, Doctor O'Shamper's gonna do the original version.
Okay. Many of the timelines are past my term of office, cause, um, if I'm correct, I'll be done in October?
January.
January. Okay. Okay, January. Darn it.
Shouldn't be laughing.
Your, your last board meeting will be, um, the December, the, the second December meeting.
Yeah, the fifteenth or sixteenth.
Well, they have, the swine dentist by the state in December. They're gonna, they'll get the four right by the state.
Yep.
So then they'll be able to be in back with whatever, but she's still voting, she's still the voter till January.
Darn.
Emily!
Isaac, welcome. I can be of assistance. There's, there's some food there if you'd like.
I've got some to drink.
Um, yeah, and then we kind of went through the, the ratings on the rubric and, and what is, what does evidence look like? What if, what if you don't have all of the evidence that you need, Dr.? Under Board Relations, um, Indicator one point two. That criteria is that the superintendent has prepared a process for the development of a strategic plan and is combined with the deadlines established to implement the plan. As we all know, this summer, our, our strategic plan timed out. And so, uh, I'm, I'm working very actively to, to get us a strategic plan. Ready and get stakeholder holder input, get board member input. And so that would be a big project to take on from this point forward.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second. Emily, I just emailed you guys six evidences. So they, you can, you can, um, pull that up via your N S B I email.
Okay, I'll check. Got it.
It, we know it might take a couple of minutes for it to get to you.
Okay, got it.
Beautiful. That's, those are the rubrics and evidences that, that Guy shared, uh, with Lane and myself, uh, which shaped how Mr. Widener, uh, created, uh, his key evidence and the rubrics more specifically. Now, board members, we have Isaac here. And Isaac is willing to help the board navigate how to look at the drive and, uh, see if the board can access that information from their devices. And if it would, if it would be all right with the board while we have Mr. Tafoya here, uh, we might utilize his time because I know that he was not going to be here, but has poked his head in the room and is willing to help us with this. So I don't know, Mr. Widener, Mr. Tafoya, how you would like, if you would like me to share my screen or how we would like to navigate? Because I don't know what I open if that is something we would like the public to view or?
It's fine right now. Um, like I said.
Except for all the, um, Ms., Ms., uh, Dr. Merrill did not do a spell check, I see.
No, no, he did not.
She will acknowledge that nothing to do with, with any of this.
She would probably spell check it very well.
So cut it down by half and we'll be back.
Um, what we can do, Mrs. Lee, in the two weeks since our board meeting, Mr. Tafoya has worked to get it, a shared drive for us. And so at this point, Mrs. Turley and I will go in and we'll have, we'll have, we'll rename the files in there. So you'll have superintendent evaluation, you'll have the files. The, the first file will be board relations. The, the second file will be communication. And that way you can open them up and see the documentation. So we'll, but I, I wanted to get it, have it ready. And so we could get it out to you.
Okay.
And so I've got those files and we, we do need to change the way it looks. But we can pull it up now and, and there's nothing confidential in there right now.
Because right now my app is one document that we're working on.
And, and I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page. And then, and then I can go in and kind of finalize things for you.
President, um, I think we need to go through the instrument.
I agree.
The technology of, of how, how it's, how it's calculated.
Right, we're not, we're not going to do that. I, the reason I'm asking about Mr. Tafoya is if any board member has a question about how to access their drive that has been shared. And then I believe that is the key, that is the key element for Mr. Tafoya being here. And Ms. Daly, you, you just indicated a few minutes ago that you were able to open the drive and you were able to get the board packet, et cetera. Is that correct, ma'am?
Yes, the one that, uh, that, that you read earlier, Grant Sibola County School Superintendent Formative Evaluation. I did get that whole packet.
Great.
But what would have helped would be pageinate. So I don't get this all confused. There's no page numbers.
There are no page numbers.
So I'll, I'll try to follow along, go ahead.
Okay, so board members, let, let me just ask it this way. Do any of you have any questions about accessing the drive? Or a drive? Ms. Daly, we know that you would like to have the flash drive, ma'am, so that it's easier for you to navigate. But for the other board members, do you all have any needs or requests or help from Mr. Tafoya? And Mr. Tafoya indicated that he will happily help any board member with questions of being able to access this. You just need to get in touch with him to schedule. But other than that, board members, anything for Mr. Tafoya at this time?
I'll do that, say that I'll have our, I'll take my computer to your office. And I'll give you a call and yeah, that'll work and I'll head over there.
All right. Yeah. Only part of it, it would be tricky is if you're using maybe a non-district device, that would be tricky to make sure we are signed into the browser and have access to that, uh, Google Drive. Once you're on your Google Drive, the simplest navigating the left side pane where there's a shared drive section, you'd have to go into that section to find the one that Mr. Widener shared.
Well, and it's our initials. Then we go into the.
Yeah, yeah. If it has your initials and your, your tool.
Right.
And I'll try, Mr. Tafoya, I'll try to get there on Friday.
Okay. That'll work, so I'll be waiting and I should be here all week next week. Um, well, let's see. For the, no, that's this Friday. This Friday I will be out and I'll be drinking. So next week I should be here all week.
So Ms. Daly, this Friday doesn't work for Mr. Tafoya.
Okay.
But next Friday does.
But if I get the flash drive that Mr. Widener is talking about, then, uh, I should be okay to access that information?
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Widener will have all of the same information in the drive as on the flash drive for you.
Okay.
This Friday is what you need and you want to be in person, Scott will also be able to help you. He'll be here Friday. So if you do make it into office, you know, somebody will be there to help. It'll be on Friday.
Did you hear that, Ms. Daly? Ma'am? We might have lost her sound.
No. Yeah, just let her know that part and I can send, I can follow up with an email.
Okay.
But yeah, I'd be happy to help if you guys need me further and, you know, to locating that. And we'll continue working with those drives to see how we can make them confidential on at least one of those. So I think that'll work the way we're, you know, driving and we'll, we'll get there. It's taking me an hour with confidentiality stuff.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Tafoya, appreciate it.
What I think would be efficient time, use of our time is to go through each one. And, and compare it with this one. One that was you were working from. He took this one and the one that was given to him as a, as a first draft. And then he, he then is showing you what he's, uh, tried to do from his perspectives. And what I like to do is to make sure that we are here. And I want to make sure that I understand which ones he chose. And Walter, there are, there are three, there are three parts to each one of the, of the performance indicator. And the first is the actual performance indicator itself, like one point one. It says board, it says communicate with all members. Then the second part is in red, key evidence. The third part is the rating. Now Walter, I'm, I'm showing you this one here in my hand. That's, this is almost the same. The only difference is that it says, I have your current evidence. That's the evidence that we had last spring. And instead of that, what the suggested evidence, at least one through six. So there are six suggested evidences. And then, then rubric. What he's done was he's looked and corrected if I'm wrong. When he's looked at the six and he's, he's saying on, on his, in the red, he said, I've chosen, I would like to consider board communication, superintendent updates, emergency safety protocols. Okay? And so when I look at this one here in the green, I see, I see it's, I can see it in there. What we need to do is to, President, I think that we need to look at those six to see if those, if, if we understand which ones they were and if there are any other, uh, if there's any, uh, board, um, preferences in addition to or in place of. And the one thing that I would say, uh, Lane, is that rather than a phrase, that there actually be a, a stated sentence so that we know what that is. Because if you use a phrase like board communications, that can mean a lot of things. That, that, that makes us go back to being subjective and, and forming an opinion. Unfairly for you, vary our ideas of what, what kind of communications we are, we're talking about. And so.
And I can, we're back to a person, we'll put those in. As I use my magic tool to, to, to reformat and change it and kind of narrow it, it, it kind of simplified. And so I can go back and put those full sentences in there. At, at one point I had them bulleted. So you had, you had board communication log documenting timely updates on major district events. And then as it went through the washing machine, and it, it, it kind of simplified it.
So what you're doing is.
I can put those back in.
What I think is important is for us to state, make those statements so that actually operationalizes for you what it is that is going to be, uh, uh, the communication. So you chose board communication, that's sort of like number one and number two. And, um, number five, I guess you're combining them to be your board communications. The super updates, that's number two, sort of. Copies of superintendent's weekly monthly written updates to board members. I would suggest that it also includes your, uh, your weekly, uh, what do you call it?
The newsletter, the, the charging the storm.
Yeah, that could be also evidence. So what I'm saying to you is that, um, th- those are, that we'd be better if we had, uh, my, my thought is that the, the complete sentence gives you a better idea and gives him a better idea of what he needs to get. We don't want to have him guess. He, he does something to guess on this. He needs to know right away, this is what I'm going to do. And these are the ones that I'm going to be, um, uh, facing on here for.
Yeah, I can, I can absolutely go back and bullet those ones, those sentences exactly. Um, that way, that way it's much clearer exactly what evidence you're looking. And, and when you look at the, the green page, Dr. Archambro said there, hey, maybe you want to reduce this to be more manageable. Well, and I wanted to be able to provide evidence. So, so I tried to choose kind of the areas where I've been working, where, where there would be some evidence. Right now, we haven't had tribal consultation. We haven't had a whole lot of state, you know, since, since July, we haven't had a lot of that yet. They're, they're scheduled, we're, we're working on it. But, but, and, and Ms. Corley and I are working on the data packets for those presentations. But I, I don't have a lot to, to share under some of those criteria. So I really wanted to be able to provide to you.
And Guy, much like what you did, I took what you shared, your six evidences. And I took our evaluation instrument that we all approved, you know, what was it, July? And, or August, whichever work session that was, that we finally got the, the formative done. And I asked, rather than six, I asked for three. Because I felt like if we, if we go six evidences for each indicator, you know, that's, that's almost as beefy as the summative evaluation. And the goal of the formative is to be, you know, a little bit, yeah, a little bit more streamlined. And so I, I created one with three evidences and then went through it because like as, as you're reading yours, i- it's great, you know, and it's clear, one through six, but some of them get repetitive. You know, where I think the first one that I looked at, it was, um, the demonstrates effective communication skills, written verbal, non-verbal, formal, informal. This is two point one, large and small groups, one-on-one environments, current evidence, presentations, wide variety of conversation. And then suggested evidences are the samples, stakeholder surveys, examples, again, tribal leader testimonials, evidence of communication and professional development logs. And so a lot of those theoretically could be streamlined into, you know, one, one or two things. And so in, in mine for the indicator, I came up with three pieces of key evidence. One would be documentation of superintendent presentations to board, staff, parents and community. Effectively communicates and documents professional development, district and site events. And three would be samples of professional development and communication and cultural responsiveness, including training, the application of feedback. You know, those, those two point one, yeah, it was two point one. But that was, so.
That's what, uh, what that, that is what we.
Is that more, is that more in line with what you're thinking? Because Mr. Widener and I sat for a couple of hours and really worked on these. But then, you know, through, as, as Mr. Widener said, the magic of his favorite tool now, it, it perhaps oversimplified. If you'd like, I will happily share, um, this document that Mr. Widener and I worked on that has three pieces of evidence. And we can look through your six, his one and my three and see if, you know, we can't all, while we still have Emily on here for another maybe twenty minutes, kind of get through and see, you know, if that's a, a kind of a happy medium where you'll be in agreement that this, the statements, Mr. Widener, that he was wanting are going to allow you to have the actual evidence there rather than,
Yeah.
you know, something more general.
Yes.
I agree. And, and so Mrs. Turley and I could update it.
So right now, right, right now, I can, um, via Google, share with everybody so they have a copy. Emily, I'll email it to you right now, ma'am. share with everybody so they have a copy. Emily, I'll email it to you right now, ma'am.
Okay.
And I'll have Ms. Charlie, uh, and I think that I sent to the printer our formative. That's the, um, the one that we approved. And so we would need copies of that as well. Let me, um, that one I did send. So let me, let me right now try and get on, um.
Well, this is what we need to do. And I'm glad you're here, Walter, to, to do it. It's the first time we're doing it. And that's great. Because we didn't do it this way the years gone by. And so this enables, uh, all of us to, 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 um, be a part of it. And we didn't get a chance to do that with you, um, when we did this. And we're creating a, a two-part process this time, a formative and a summative. Usually we, we had the summative. Then he would, uh, he would make comments on them. Whoever was the one, but I, I'm not weighted to a lot of these, the six that I proposed. Their, their suggestions, we can then select those that are probably the most, um, appropriate for that, uh, for that indicator. And that's what we can do. Um, but what was it? The only proviso is that we ensure we have complete statements, sentences that are sufficiently descriptive for you know, to know what it is that you're doing. And that's why I created that one. When you said two point one, I, I'm, that's a, that's one that needs to prove. We can, we can, um.
Absolutely. So.
Consolidate, eliminate and re, restate.
Should be two different ones. The formative, original instrument that we just all approved. And that's a to be landscape. And then this document that I just shared, Ms. Daly, I did just share this document with you, Mr. Widener. I reshared or I shared with you with the updated rubrics.
Hold on.
Board members, Mrs. Charlie and I can go in tomorrow and add back in the full sentences, um, under the evidence. And also, Mrs. Daly, you mentioned page numbers would be helpful. So I will make sure that we have page numbers. And when we're looking at indicator one point one, you know, board relations has a Roman numeral one. And that way, it'll be more user friendly that way. You might have to give me a day or two. Give me, give me till Wednesday to get everything corrected, but.
Okay. I, I need access. It says you need access because access is switching account with access.
So if you, um, request, you should be able to click on it and request access. And then I can give you access via email.
Okay, request sent.
I should have just gotten it. I think I got it on my phone before I got it via email. Okay, ma'am, I just clicked that I shared it with you.
Okay.
The new board, they need more structure. So there's samples.
Examples.
Discussed it, but in January, there'll be three.
Yeah.
And so this will help them, you know, jumping right into it.
Okay, got it.
And I think now if we have a tool that we all agree to.
And I understand.
That'll be helpful for March.
That rep, yeah, it just says that and it really is. Here it kind of lays about, it wants a little bit more writing there, there.
It's fine.
But they could, there is some repetitive.
Yeah.
And all the more reason we can, we can look at it and, and it's our, it's, it's our chance to, to come up with something that is workable for, for him and for us. And I chose six just because I needed to break it out and then we could then, you know, like, 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 um. What President was saying is that she did, she also looked at it too. Is that what they're going to show us? Is she going to bring back to us the?
Yes.
Great. Then we can see that.
Oh my gosh, this is even longer than our original one.
Ma'am, it's much shorter. But just, just, yeah, I was gonna say, Guy is lying because Guy had six evidences. I only had three.
What you do is you're consolidating it all.
Yeah, when I, when I put it through the washing machine, it trumped.
But basically there's a map of how to evaluate. It makes sense.
Emily, I just sent you an actual Google document version of it. Because I think that where you're accessing it from the Google document might be easier than the Word document. So I, I sent it again, but as a Google doc.
Okay, I don't know.
So if you, if you get that one and you need me to give you access, just request that again, ma'am, and I'll, I'll grant you access to both.
I need access.
Okay, just request that and I will.
I did.
Do that one again.
Before you leave, we'll have.
All right, there you go. I shook, I gave you access.
We'll have this pool set up.
Yeah.
Uh, he thought it was gonna be easy, pre-bulleted. He put it there, we say, I'll tell her, I mean, and I'm just gonna stay back. We're just gonna, I'm gonna just sit back.
Hey, we're, we're glad you guys are here though.
Yeah, guide us through this.
Get through it.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes I'm wondering why we're running again.
Yeah, and, and.
You're the next three that are in here.
Guy.
Francie, Francie, and, you know, there's some.
Work with.
I don't know. For how many's? Okay, we got three. Okay.
And you?
Well, three, no, three, three.
Walter is running again.
Three positions.
And then Emily's and Ron's.
Obviously. And two for sure, we know are going to be, you know, that's what I mean. So. And since you have not done this before, this then helps all, all three of you, all four of you, or actually all five, wherever it may be, to, to, uh, not be confused about it. You basically will have the instrument laid out. We didn't have to do that because we were all together for several years.
Yeah.
We knew the, uh, the group, we knew the instrument. But, uh, this will enable all of you to work together much more quickly.
So what hap- what happens, this is the formative, what happened to the summative? We no longer have to do that? Or you no longer have to do that?
The summative is still a part.
Yeah, still. The summative, Mrs. Daly, is still the long one.
Okay.
And you won't ha- you won't have to do that this year.
Thank you.
That one you did get away with and wrong.
Twelve, this one is twelve pages too. The other one that you sent me, it's the same amount of pages, twelve.
Yeah, the, the twelve pages this is Mrs. Lee's version.
Kind of house because you and Francie are educators. You guys know how to work on, like I said, I don't, like I said, usually when you do evaluations, we just do.
Yes.
You know, when I do evaluations, you know, it's like we work with him all the time. So you know how to evaluate.
Well.
But we don't work with him all the time, you know, we're, the only one you work with is Francie. We don't, that's with you. I mean, if I'll give information for the Thursday on a lot of sessions.
Unless you become president. And then you really have.
Then you're busy.
Dr. Guy and I, for the first six months when he was president, we, we would be hours, weekly.
Right, and I would take it just for the kids, you know.
Yeah, no, if you are.
It doesn't matter what you do. I just want you all to. So I want our kids to succeed. Yeah, and that's the bottom line. The board is responsible for it. If your kids don't succeed, we're not succeeding. Yeah, and, and. All your parts are put. And through him.
Through him, right.
That's the way it works. So that's why the, the instrument has to be strong for, for you guys. And all of them need to succeed, the, the artistic ones, the does everybody, you know, I, I just like to see the world of, you know, give it down to Walmart, neither, you know what I mean? I want to see if we, they've done those treatments somehow. Yes.
That's also why I emphasize that when we're looking at data, data that's presented, that it's, it's evidential data that tells us where our kids are at, not, not. If we're not at grade level, then a two to three percent increase means crap. Uh, now, if we were at grade level or proficient, even near proficiency, then yeah, that game would look for, uh, formidable, but if we're still below proficiency, it doesn't mean anything. Just means they maybe can read one, one word better.
But how does a superintendent get them there? That's the question. I mean, we don't want him running all over grants, visiting the mayor. I mean, you should listen with the mayor and the county commissioner and the city manager or even whatever goes up.
Well, that's why we, we need people that know how to, to read data and know how to assess it. And that, and that, and we were, we had personnel that could pro- provide that to us, charts that would provide us so that we didn't have to ask those questions like, where are we at proficient? Or, or near proficiency or below proficiency? We actually had people that could tell us by the scores. And that, yeah, that we understood.
The one way.
Yep.
You can't do it all. Yeah. I don't want to get myself mixed up. We have two people.
Just combine all of this and, uh, just combine every guy. And we'd like it by tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, board members. Now, everybody should have a copy of Guy's six evidences. Emily, do you still have the copy of the formative instrument that we approved back in July or August? Do you still have that one? Or do you want me to send it right now?
I think you better send it to me because, um.
Okay.
I don't have it.
You still have plenty of time?
Well, I got two minutes. They're, they're turning out the hallway lights. So let me put it like this. I'll let you guys finish what you're doing and, and, um, when I get there Friday, maybe I can look at the data that, uh, Mr. Widener is going to present me in the driving. I can, uh, discuss stuff with Mr. Dr. Guy since he's the one that's putting this together. And I understand, I understand the data and I understand the instruments. So, um, I don't, I don't want to sustain or to hinder you guys moving forward, trying to, trying to get, keep me informed. Dr. Guy can do that.
I, I just sent you the PDF of what we, as the board approved end of July, August, whenever that meeting was.
When we get the letter.
Yeah, it was, it was after. It was one more work session after.
Yeah.
Anyway, July or August.
Mrs. Daly, I will get page numbers on all of the pages and, and.
Okay.
Dana and I will get everything ready to roll by Wednesday and, and I'll, I'll get it to Ms. Ray.
Okay, got it. Open it up. Okay, yeah, that's the form I recognize.
Charming.
And that's the form I never had trouble doing.
It'll be, it'll look a lot more like this, but finished. And then the scoring right there.
Okay.
And then I believe, Mr. Widener, you created where all you have to do is click your rating and it scored.
On the tool.
On the actual tool.
Correct. Okay.
So that's. Yes, yes.
I just wanted to ask before I forget.
Right. So this evening, we are going to go through these and, and yes, it's twelve pages, but it's pretty much only one, one thing per page. So suggestions on how, how we would like to proceed.
Let's try the first one. One point, number one point one.
Well, I, okay.
And let's see what we can do. Let's, we're gonna, our goal is to try to get it to three.
I mean, let's.
I got six.
Three evidences.
You've got three.
Got it.
He has three.
He has one, one.
No, he, she has.
My evidences are still three.
Oh, I see what it is. It's shortened. I got it. I got it.
The three that you have or the three that.
It's shortened from.
That I thought I could drive it.
So.
Okay.
So on, on this, on your version.
So which one are we looking at? The formative or the one you just sent me?
It would be a choose my own adventure and then I, I kind of pick three that I could.
Emily, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share in theory. I'm gonna share my screen.
And then on my version.
You'll be able to pull that up so Rob can see that though, right?
I am gonna pull it up.
Like you're doing with the tool.
Right.
Yep, I'm gonna pull that up right now.
And I know, I should show me, you know, but. What I've said is just get it, it's just navigating into it.
Right.
Okay. What I would suggest.
Okay, board members here on the screen. Emily, do you, do you see on there now?
That one's yours.
That, this one is mine just because it was the middle of the row.
Okay, I see it. It's not very big, but I can see it.
Is that a little bit better now, ma'am?
That's better, yes.
So if we're, if we're gonna start with trying to see if I have.
And the one we approved wasn't that, that, that either.
No, the one we announced, that's the, right, that's this, yeah, that, this one isn't bad at all. But what, what Guy's biggest, well, and what Guy's biggest concern is, is that this, uh, run is, is very subjective. And so giving the key evidence and then the rubric, the way that you can have the rating scored makes it to where each board member is able to look at everything provided as well as their personal experiences in the district with the superintendent would be able to score more accurately everything. So Guy, when I created my three, I literally took from your six.
Yeah.
The three and, and. The three and, and. Well, so barely. Because I think that your evidence and and Mister Widener agreed with me, your points were very good and valid. But it was a matter of how can we take six and cut it down to a manageable, short. Assessment rather than, you know, the big in-depth one.
Yeah.
So if we're, a- and Guy, you, you said, let's just start with one point one.
I'll go with all three. Right off the bat.
Okay.
Cause what I would be, I would say that he needs to have something that says that he's making contact with tribes. Uh, mine, I have um, number six is the last one. So I was just trying to tag it on to one of the three that you proposed, that, that uh, you and Lane proposed. So that we'd still keep it at three.
Emily's writing on hers.
So I would suggest that we could um.
So on major events. Tribal. I would think it would go there.
Including uh, yeah, including uh. Including of uh, tribal engagement, something like that.
That is like, like. I can share the student success meetings, I can share. About the initial tribal consultation.
Okay, well, Guy, yeah, hold on, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back here. And, and say. Guy, if, if we're gonna put tribal on every indicator. Then that's being repetitive because. We have board relations and that's, that's board, that's the board, right? So that would be, in my opinion, it would be your communication about district events with us, the board. Because then here, if we go to one point two. As prepared, a process for the development of the strategic plan is in compliance with deadlines established. Re- records of inclusive stakeholder engagement, parents, tribe, staff, students. Documents demonstrating alignment of government's duties with district priorities and strategic planning. And then indicator two point two, the communication skills. Documentation of superintendent presentations to board, staff, parents and community.
And that's where you should, that's where you should have tribal consultation.
So if we look. Indicator two point two promotes and invites involvement of all stakeholders to fully participate. In the process of developing and implementing school district policies and board-approved strategic plan. That one, Emily, I think you would agree, that very much tribal consultation, meeting notices and attendance. So I think Guy, what you were, what you were doing. And I think what I streamlined a little bit was taking out some of the.
Repetitiveness.
Repetitiveness, you know, uh, uh, because some of these, you know, it's, it's very important. That, you know, it's all, like, if, if we're looking instructional leadership. You know, one of the things on here, disaggregated students for three point one.
Then we would have to change um. On yours.
Sure.
Go to rubrics.
Okay.
Go to the uh, it's probably mine, I'm sitting on my keys probably.
Uh-oh.
Um, goes to the fifth rubric.
Okay, so if we're, are we on one point one?
Yes.
Okay.
We do, we don't mention tribal leaders and tribal consultation, I mean, tribal engagement until later, but we do. Have a problem with that. It just means that we would have to modify rubric number five.
Beautiful, we can do that, sir.
So we would.
We would probably just leave that last clause out, because I think everything else is on there. It's true, yeah, we're on, now we're on, we went all the way back to one point one.
This one is supposed to communicate to the board what's happening.
Agreed.
So he would pick up the phone and say, this is happening, that's the first thing you think, an emergency of some sort. That's what number one point one is, he's saying that he's gotta talk to us about that, or it says events, talks about the events. And um. In a timely manner, means something has to be, you can't say, oops, I forgot to tell you. And they'll say, don't worry, everybody else told us.
Right.
We've got phone calls.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's event-oriented. It's basically him communicating to us about things. More so. And so. If you were to expand the definition of events, then we start to add more and more. Whereas this one is referring basically that he's just gonna keep us informed. Bottom line is, that's what this is about. Keeping us informed on a regular basis. Whatever manner you, we think is important, and it's going to be, you know, the various methods. And um. Says copies of superintendent's updates to board members. I guess I'm having difficulty with the restrictiveness of the word updates. I would just say that um, you, you would want to inform us. Throughout the, yeah, throughout the week. Trying to think of something a bit more flexible so that you can include all the things that are going to be uh, uh. In need of being reported to the board. Uh, if it's updates, then that kind of means we're updating something.
I think if you add just a word into board communications. Documenting consistent and timely updates on major district events, not excluding rare or missing.
Something like that.
Can you chat on yours since I'm screen sharing?
Oh, me?
Oh, no, ma'am, I was asking Widener, uh, because he has his laptop here. So put, put in chat. Board communications documenting timely updates on major district events.
Consistent and timely update.
Only, no, only the first one, sir. Only board communications documenting timely update. For key evidence. Where am I?
I would just like to add the word action.
So we see where I'm highlighted? Take that one sentence and ask chat to make it more descriptive. For district events. And what would a better word be than update? I mean, if we're gonna go in, let's, let's chat this up and let everybody see what. Ms. Daly?
Yes.
What would, what would a, a good synonym of update be?
Consistency.
Yeah.
Because, because you have to um. We have to recognize, we can't get this information a day, a day later, a day too late. It has to be consistent and timely. And available. Cause I know in the, in the, in the past, um, I had parents calling me saying, well. You know, maybe it's, that there's a storm out here in La- in Laguna and the east side. But nothing's happening in Grants, so the parents are wondering, do we. Are our kids going to go to school, or the, or Grants is closed and there's nothing happening in Laguna? Then this, the school gets shut down, but Laguna, there's no snow. So it has to be consistent, timely. And um.
Informative.
Informative, yeah.
So. Chat came back with board communications documenting timely updates on major district and community events partnerships and initiatives.
How about something like pursuant to locations, because not everything that happens in Grants is happening at Laguna Atma and vice versa. Cause it's funny, I mean, it is, it's hilarious sometimes when the parents will call me and say, how come we close school just because it's snowing in Grants? That means then we have to make it up in Laguna Atma, you know, I, I don't actually even know how to get around that. Because uh, not a lot of schools don't have that problem.
Uh, because it's, well, it's, it's district-wide.
Yeah.
Guy, what about the word, you're, you're not liking updates? How about timely, how about timely briefings?
Yeah, notification.
Nah, notifications, but a briefing means.
Too much back and forth, right? Notifications is good, so board, board. Let's, let's look at this sentence again, board communications documenting timely.
It has to be updated.
Updates, yeah. We don't want, we don't want briefings because that could mean everybody's making the decision.
Notifications on major.
Communications documenting timely notifications on major district and community events partnership.
That looks good.
Just major district events.
I think you have, you almost had it. The only problem is that the original indicator says. Items that impact district operations or governance, district budget, safety and security. So you let it, let's, let's open a bit, just saying notifications, then, and then you can continue to include. The remainder of that uh, indicator. Say. Communicate with all, in a, all time a matter regarding.
You're right, notifications is too. Like you say, too.
See, what is you saying, yes.
No, document timely.
You just say um.
Notifications period.
Timely notifications.
Period.
On.
I don't think you even have to say on what, because it's on everything.
Just put of, notifications of major district events. Because what happens if they're, they run out of food at one school, we're not going to close the whole school down. So you just wanna say of major district events, so that means graduations, that means close, school closures, flooding.
Listed above.
Well.
No, then, then we limit ourselves to things that we can write down.
It's really hard to, to think about a years-long. Series of notifications that's gonna cover a lot of things. So. We don't want to exclude things that um, should be part of this. And so I could see us just saying notifications of, of um, just adding. Of district operations, board governance, district budget and safe, you know, I could go back and just add those back on there.
Well, that's what I just said and Emily shot me down.
Okay, I'm looking for other words for notify in um.
Water will be off the.
Well, but if we're, if we're adding.
Reporting.
In. No, notifications, I think is okay, Emily, I think notification is better than reporting or update. But I think what we're, what we've gotta do and what Guy was just saying is that we have to look at what the indicator is. And place, you know, por- portions of that into what the evidence is. So board communications documenting timely notifications of major district events. Operations, governance, budget, safety and security.
Yeah.
So that's what I said and Emily said no, so what do you think now, Emily?
How about alerts? Let's see. I'm trying to pull, pull it off.
And include still, include what you were saying at the end of it, that you still uh, kinda giving you some idea of what uh, what you should be notifying us on. You should be notifying and alerting us to things that are affecting the, the operations of the district, which could be anything. And then uh, but then you also say, okay, I'm, I'm gonna do that, that means that when I notify you, you're gonna be able to put that into my evaluation. And then when I, when I, and then board governance, anything that affects the board's governance responsibilities, that could be a lot of things. So that broadens your uh, your capacity to, to identify things that you need to, to talk to us about.
So here we go, key evidence, board communications documenting timely notifications of major district events. Alerts, operations, governance, budget and safety.
I'll say that carries from the.
One point one?
Yeah, that's three one point one.
Okay, so it's district budget, comma, safety, comma, and security items. You don't need to end.
Need to include health because.
Oh, yeah. Take out the and and put health, comma, safety and security items.
Put that to dust.
Well, like, you know, there was measles, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Good, have it good again.
Okay, we, we added health to the indicator. So it says communicate the indicator, communicate with all members of the board in a timely manner regarding major events occurring.
Okay.
It's say in the district, not at the district, in the district. Items that impact district operations, board governance, district budget, safety, health and security items.
There you go.
And then evidence that it reflects on that. Board communications documenting timely notifications of major district events, alerts. Operations, governance, budget and health slash safety. Copy of superintendent's updates to the board, emergency slash safety communication protocols and examples of implementation. So that would lead us into the rubric, which is how we would score. So one would be communications are rare or missing, two, updates provided inconsistently. Two, updates provided inconsistently. Three would be regular communication with some documentation, protocols in place, but not consistently applied. A four would be timely, well documented updates across events, budgets and safety. Protocols consistently followed, board members' report satisfaction. And a five would be, excuse me, proactive systematic communication, early alerts on critical issues, documented integration of safety protocols and board updates, equitable inclusion of tribal and community issues. That last after the semicolon was what we were saying. We didn't think initially needed to be included in this portion because it actually falls in several other sections. So how, how do we feel overall about 1.1?
No, I think we still need to put it, because it doesn't say anything regarding, uh, tribal relations or communications in this board relations. And that's pertinent for us to make sure that we notify them, that we include it. Cause I don't see it anywhere else. In this board.
It's actually multiple places further down, but this is the superintendent's relations with the board. It isn't outside, 1.1 is for us only. That's how I read this. Communicate with all members of the board. So that, that's why we have those items on there. And then when we get down a little bit further, I believe it was 2. something or three. That one, um, engages a lot of information about tribal relations and what the superintendent is sharing with the board and how he's interacting, um, you know, with all of the stakeholders in the district. Yeah, so it, it goes, it goes further down in there. So then indicator 1.2 ma'am is, has prepared a process for the development of a strategic plan and is complying with the deadlines established to implement the plan. And that's what Mr. Widener's been working on the last, you know, six weeks, trying to get started on that. And then the key evidence there would be, uh, an approved strategic plan development timeline aligned uh, to NMPED deadlines, records of inclusive stakeholder engagement, right there. Uh, Emily, uh, is parents, tribe, staff, students. And then documents demonstrating alignment of the governance duties with district priorities and strategic planning. So that one there. Any board members' comments, feelings, feedback on 1.2 before we get to the rubric portion?
Still 1.1, right?
All right, we moved on to 1.2.
Nope, that's there.
Well, you didn't say anything.
No, so I was chatting. I mean, this chat. What I looked at was, uh, what does board governance mean? And I was trying to informally. Such a like, what, what governance mean? And we say in indicator 1.1 that we're going to, um, what, how do you notify us on broad things? Including board governance would just be a catch all kinds of stuff. Then what does it catch? What does it include? So you would, if, if, when we come up with these terms, it can, it can become difficult for you then have to decide, well, what is it that I'm going to be including? Then we have to decide, well, that is part of board governance. What is part of, I don't know what it is. So I looked it up and you give me an explanation what board governance is. It says, in terms of relationship, board superintendent relationship, stakeholder engagement, consulting within listening to community members. That's part of board governance. And so you're to, uh, to notify us on your, on, uh, how you're helping the board in, in, in having the district be engaged with its stakeholders. So it says consulting with and listening to community members. That means that if you're doing that, that you're able to, to include those kinds of engagements you have in this section. Cause it is part of board governance. And, um, that's what I'm looking at trying to. Because board governors, board governors framework. Pulled up, uh, uh, trying to see the, what the, what the school board says that board governance is. Board governance has the statutory, it has core governance responsibilities. Um, and so it really stretches a bit, stretches a lot. So you want to have a chance to, to document a fair representation of all the kinds of communications. And if we say board governance, then we need to help you know what is possible for it to. Now, what's that all about? Basically what I'm saying is that if you modify that, if you modify, uh, rubric number five, which stated proactive systematic communication, early alerts on critical issues, documented integration of safety protocols and board updates equitable. That means that's the, that's what gets you a five. And then equitable, tribal community issues. What you could do is to restate that and say, um, stakeholder. Stake, stakeholder, um, communication. Stakeholder. Tribal, community stakeholder issues. And so if you're going to have a meeting and it's part of what it says here in the New Mexico School Board Associations, um, that, that's one of our, one of our governance areas. If you recall, um, fancy, we have in our governance, uh, policy on communication with tribal councils. That is one of the areas that, um, that we would want to ensure we're, we'll be involved with. And it says in the, in that policy for our board, says that the, the superintendent shall, uh, so, um, establish, uh, meetings, uh, communications with the, with the, uh, with the tribes.
Okay, I, okay, I agree a hundred percent with everything you're saying. But you are getting, I think, too into the weeds on this with the definition of board governance because we have a whole section about communication. And that section about communication is going to talk about all of the engagement, all of the stakeholders and everything like that. Honestly, and this is again, my opinion, one of five of us. I think that when we're talking board governance here, as in board relations, that's Mr. Widener making sure that we have legislative updates, that policies are updated, that it's the actual operation of the board in conjunction with the superintendent. That's how, that's how I read it. And I think that if you're going to go too into the weeds about board governance, then maybe we need to pick a different word than governance because the communication, the instructional leadership, all of that is going to be even into staff relations, all of that is going to be very specific involving, uh, implementing student information.
Okay, let me, let me pose this. I think this would have been an opp- opportune moment for, if we had been able to meet with, uh, Katie and the other representatives because they, they then would have dictated to us what they feel is adequate and consistent communication. So we'll be here all night, we'll be here all night, we keep on doing this. So let's, let's, let's agree to, yeah, let's agree to disagree and then move on to the next one. Uh, otherwise, there's not enough time in the, in the evening to get all of them done. So I'm going to have to leave, they're giving me the wrap up sign. And so, um, whatever you guys come up with, then, um, Ms. Lee, you can send it to me and I'll look it over, uh, tomorrow.
Like, yes, I agree. This 2.2 takes care of it.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Okay. All right, good night. Safe travels home. Bye bye.
Be careful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. On that note.
On that note, we're going to keep moving forward, right?
1.2.
Yes, sir. We're there, we're ready.
Get my two green, healthy, one.
I know.
Can we see you? Three blue, three greens.
Yeah, but one's bright.
Yep.
I gotta figure this out. Color, hoodie. Some kind of hoodie.
Some guy, well, you were doing the thing. I was looking at what board powers and responsibilities are in our policies. And that was what led me to say, I think that the board relations portion is different outside of the communication section. And we will get to that. Cause communication covers a lot of what you and Miss Daley were stating, which I agree with.
There's not only tribal relations, but there's still, you're still having relations with the city, the city wants it, our, our school, like the city property. Right, there's economy property, blue water availability. When you have all the. What point?
But we do really need to try to get through this guy. Because we did, and yes, I understand that we can make adjustments on timelines, but we have spent months on this now and I think that we really need to do right, do right by our employee and, and get started.
And starting value paid.
Yeah, so we really need to see if we can agree to keep trudging along so that we can approve this tonight. That way Isaac can help get it to everybody. We can make sure that we're all at least in line on this. So 1.2, I'll read it again. Uh, indicator 1.2 has prepared, superintendent has prepared a process for the development of a strategic plan as in, and is complying with the deadlines established to implement the plan. Key evidence could be approved strategic plan development timeline aligned to the NMPED deadlines, records of inclusive stakeholder engagement, parents, tribe, staff, students. And three would be documents demonstrating the alignment of governance duties with district priorities and strategic planning. And then the rubrics would be, one is no process or missed deadlines, no documentation. Two would be process drafted, but deadlines missed, limited evidence of stakeholder involvement. Three, timeline and stakeholder input documented, compliance evidence, but compliance evident that engagement shall, four would be inclusive timely process documented uh, with board and stakeholder alignment to district priorities. And five would be exceeds requirements with comprehensive documentation, strong tribal community input and transparent alignment with governance. I, I think all of that makes sense. Mr. Widener, what is, what are your thoughts on the key evidence and the rubric on that one?
I think I can provide. I think I can, I can meet that criteria, so.
I mean, it's clearly going to keep evolving because as you said earlier, we're, we know that our strategic plan that we have been using currently has expired, has ended.
Correct.
And we need to be moving forward with the process.
Correct.
So Guy, thoughts, Ron, thoughts? Walter, thoughts?
So what do we do, then we must stick to the three? And then we still need the six.
So we're, we're hoping to go to three evidences rather than six evidences. But Guy's evidence here, these are the ones for 1.2, these are all of the ones that he had suggested and so three was.
You ended with three.
I, I compressed, streamlined.
I'll just try to see where you could. First, three out of six that you can. Explain number, the third evidence.
The rubric or the third key evidence. Documents demonstrating alignment of government's duties with district priorities and strategic planning. So I think, yeah, that's a good, no, it's a very valid thing. I think that when that sentence was utilized and we were talking about it, Mr. Widener and I were talking about all of the different things that the district has to do for all of the title compliance, for all of the, um, you know, engagement as far as the English language learners, you know, the different stakeholder groups and what those different groups and the titles, the funding, everything, how all of that could show that that is going into how the strategic plan is being created.
Well, and I think there's also the academic as well.
Right.
To do, talk about dash plan, talk about, you know, compliance with PED. There's a lot of, there's a lot of evidence that can. Recovered by everybody.
Literally.
So if you were to put into the, uh, instrument that, um, Isaac is has developed, what would you put in there? I would put the priorities from the stakeholder groups. I would put the governmental requirements for what needs to be in a strategic plan. I would put, I would, I would include for you guys, the different quotes I've gotten, the different proposals I've gotten for strategic plan. Um, feedback we've gotten on the strategic plan. The data, the academic data, um, you, you'd want to look at the federal compliance and look at, you know, are we off? are we offering culturally linguistic responsive education, are we providing SEL, are we, are we
safe and
Okay. What, what we then have to do is to then look for each board member has to look at what you entered into the ISIC.
Which is drive.
And then determine which of the five rubrics we would consider you having met. Is that how it works? And so you would have to make sure that you're able to do that. So as you look at the five rubrics, one through five, you'd want to be able to demonstrate those, just as you did for one point one.
So do you like the, I think what Guy's asking is, do you feel like, and again, I'll remind everybody, this is the first formative. Some of these things are not going to be 100% completed, because we're a couple of months into the school year, right? So we know that some of this evidence may be a bit shallow right now. And I, I would assume, and, and nobody should assume, right?
Well.
But I would think that with some of these things, we would know we're, we're not even ninety full days in, right? We're about to hit day forty, is that right?
Day forty is April.
So, some of this here, for the first formative, we have to, as a board, take into consideration, we're day forty for the school year, but day whatever, ninety for the fiscal year, you know? So, some of these things, we aren't gonna have everything here.
The. If you look at one point two, the actual indicator, it begins to clarify for you what you're supposed to try and document, or try to do. It's actually basically saying, Mr. Widener, this is what you need to do. And one point two, it says, Mr. Widener, this, these first three months, you're supposed to prepare a process for the development of a strategic plan. And it's complying with deadlines established to implement. So we come up with deadlines to, so you have to ask yourself, okay, what are the deadlines? And then you'd have, and then you say, I'm not sure, then you'd want to come back to us and say, okay, I need to know what the deadlines are that I'm supposed to be working on. And that's what you need to do. And so there's an approved strategic plan development timeline. If you just skip the NMPED deadlines and just say, okay, I'm supposed to come up with a strategic plan development timeline, it starts to be more workable for you. Then you say, okay, what have I done so far? Or I think I'm gonna do these next couple of weeks. And that's what I'm gonna probably put in there. And we've also given you the, in the, in that letter, we, you know, we've provided, so you go back to that and look at that and see what it says that you're supposed to do on strategic planning. I don't have the wording, it wasn't that long, it was, it was basically giving you some direction. You may say to us, I think these are the timelines, the deadlines, the deadline to follow. So we'd want to discuss that, that could be another part of the, your leadership, say, in October, the next board meeting, this is what I'm going to get done. And does that fit, so yes, he does this fit into my formative? So. I don't, I don't have anything to change, other than I would say I just eliminate the lighting, the deadlines, because then they give you more flexibility.
So, which? What would you like me to change on?
I would just say approved strategic, approved, he would need to have a what he's gonna do is he's gonna get us to approve a strategic plan development timeline. That's what he's gonna give it, give to us, and we're gonna approve it. And then he can check that off, got that approved.
Okay. Just for ease on this, are we looking at evidence, the indicator, or the rubric to?
I was looking at the evidence first of all.
Okay, so what would you?
I just would give it more flexibility, just say approved strategic plan development timeline, period.
Okay.
And eliminate the lighting, the deadlines, that would give him
Beautiful.
Give him more flexibility, the rest of it is fine.
Okay. Board members, any other comments on that? Thank you for that clarification, sir.
So. Let's see it, you're welcome now. Yeah, let's see.
Well, thank you, I, I am taking any step that we make forward as a great thing, so.
And so you would still need to show record of inclusive stakeholders engagement, or you're going to say, this is what in my time, in the timeline, this is what I'm going to do with that. And so I'm scheduling meetings with the tribes, so when we're in the meeting, you know, you should be able to say, this is, we don't want you to, to make it up, we just want you to say, this is where I'm really at.
Yeah.
And what we have to say is, is this, is he getting us there? All we wanna know, are you getting us there in the development of a, because it's not, there's no real, um, we're just, we're, for the first time putting it together in this way. And also having to realize we've got state, the Yasi Martinez and everything else coming down, and us trying to figure out what to put in there. And that you, you know that you'll need to engage to your stakeholder groups, your tribes, and so forth, and you say, whatever it is that I, I mean, we're there, fine. But I still don't understand documents demonstrating alignment of government's duties. But let's, let's see if we can teach ourselves what that's gonna be.
Very good. Communication. Indicator two point one demonstrates effective communication skills, written, verbal, non-verbal, context, formal and informal settings, large and small groups, and one-on-one environment. Key evidence, documentation of superintendent presentations to we can add to the board staff, parents, and community, effectively communicates and documents professional development, district and site events, samples of professional development and communication and cultural responsiveness, responsiveness, including training, application, feedback, and then the rubrics. Uh, one, presentation and communications are ineffective or unclear, little or no documentation. The two would be communication occurs but is inconsistent or lacks cultural linguistic adaptation. Three would be documentation shows effective communication in some settings, basic responsiveness demonstrated. A four would be consistently clear communication across audiences, professional development documented culturally and linguistically inclusive practices in place. And a five would be exemplary communication documented across all settings, PD applied and effective trust actively built with diverse communities. Guy has said he's fine, board members, any other comments?
I had six, I've, you put down the three, I'm fine with all three.
Thank you, sir.
What were the samples of professional development? How would you do that?
What I, what I would share, Ron, I would share the agendas of our, of our professional development. But I'd also include like, like, like this one, they're looking at curriculum for the, the science curriculum. So, I would include some of that.
Like the Mars on.
They have like a walkthrough checklist that you guys might wanna look at, what they're looking for in class, and it is, I could share all of it.
Walter, anything? All right. Indicator two point two says, it promotes and invites involvement of all stakeholders to fully participate in the process of developing and implementing school district policies and the board-approved strategic plan. Key evidence would be meeting notices and attendance records from stakeholder engagement sessions, tribal consultation logs and agreements, documents, agendas, and minutes linking district policies to equity and cultural responsiveness, showing district leadership's efforts to ensure equitable support for all students. The rubric ratings, a one would be no records, minimal to no engagement. A two rating would be limited involvement documented, token tribal participation. A three would be engagement sessions documented with attendance, input, input recorded but limited in depth. Four would be strong documentation and participation from the diverse groups, policies reflecting input. And five would be, that score would be sustained co-decision-making model documented, tribal and community voices embedded in policy. Guy.
Um, to get a five is what anybody would want. You want, if you want, go for the goal. So let me say to yourself, okay, in October, what am I gonna present? And what would we say is realistic? Okay, that's what you have to say to yourself, what is realistic? And, because when you talk to us, you have to say, well, when they're not there yet, we've only got two months, but this is what I can share with you. That's what you would need to do, is to, is to share with us what is, what are some of the things you're trying to do? And, and there could be some preliminary contacts with with stakeholder groups, planning, working out with your various groups, how they want to participate. And, and they need to realize that they're, they're being invited to. They don't participate, that's not that one. And they need to be ready to engage. So in the next twenty, thirty days, you would want to be able to do that. And when we have the formative meeting, that's when we're going to say, okay, this is, this is our aspiration, this was the reality. And then you're, then we'll say, okay, let's inject to see what's gonna happen in the next three months, or whatever, the next period of time. If we're doing it two, we're doing two formative?
Yes, the second one is March.
And we would outline our game plan for the, for the next formative. But that's and I think on that one, the second period of formative is gonna be critical, it's gonna be substantial.
Yes.
This one's, we're just getting, we're just getting started. So what we will be doing in, in October is, is setting the groundwork for the
March. March.
So that you have a better idea of what it's, what it's gonna so what I'm saying is that we don't we don't necessarily need to have a five. We may not be able to do a five. I may be able to support that, but you'd wanna try to do a five. You, you work out with your team.
I mean, you want a five on all of them, right?
Yes.
So, but not even December.
He calculates better that way.
What do you mean, December?
Or, we, so we do one in October, right?
Yes, that's what we're working on right now. And then March is the second one, and then June is
And will I still do a presentation?
Let's talk about that later.
Let's do that during time line, because that's the next agenda.
Okay. I'm, whatever, we just, three point one?
So you're, you're all right with that? Ron, how do you feel, you good? Okay, three point one, instructional leadership, sir. Sets priorities for improving student achievement in all student areas, including risk groups such as ethnicity, English learners, students with disabilities or giftedness, and economically disadvantaged students. And promotes high expectations for teaching and student learning, and reports to the board the measurable and substantial progress for each category. Key evidence, documentation highlighting targeted interventions for diverse student groups, MLSS. Documentation and supporting evidence of professional development emphasizing equity-focused teaching practices. And third key evidence would be disaggregated student performance data showing progress for all subgroups as available and/or disembargoed. The rubric has the ratings one through five, a one, no evidence of the interventions or subgroup monitoring. A two would be limited interventions documented, subgroup data incomplete or inconsistently reported. Three would be interventions and PD documented, disaggregated data reported, but uneven progress. Four would be systematic interventions documented, PD aligned with equity, subgroup progress consistently tracked. Five, comprehensive documentation of systematic interventions, PD and subgroup progress, evidence of measurable gains across all groups.
I'm looking at my six, so like, yes, so about hers and yours, and so you do kind of squash stuff together.
Well, again, we're trying to streamline this one a little bit, as far as not having it be quite as lengthy as the summative, okay? Because Mr. Widener said that he was in agreement that the, the summative needed to be more substantial. And so when we, Walter, when we all agreed to the two points, you, you know, for, for the evidence, we're now working to figure out the best way to score and make sure that, you know, when we're reading what that indicator is from the original, you know, evaluation instrument.
That there's evidence.
That there's evidence to match what that indicator is.
This fits exactly what you were saying, but formerly when you say, what, what we are about, or what I'm about is student success. That's this, that's instructional leadership. That means we wanna help him be a better instructional leader. He wants to be a better instructional leader. That then translates down into the, to the principals and then to the teachers, to the kids, and, and then ultimately, if he does this well
To the classroom.
Right. If he does this well, then that's a strong motivation for a successful program. It was realized, this also includes dash plans. Because, and MLSS, I'm, I'm sure that the, that your paid communications are gonna start to incorporate a lot of these things, expectations, and I would not be surprised. And I would not be surprised if she was, if the presentations were going to talk about all this diversity inclusiveness, the MLSS, how do we do that? How do we ensure that the, that our school improvement plans, which are the dash plans, are going to be helping you do this? So anything that we do, anything that the principals do with you is how this is gonna happen. So it's your, it's sort of like, um, this is yours and their marching orders for what we need to do.
Right.
And you would be able to assess, sets priorities. You're saying to them, we are going to do this because it's the right thing to do. And we want to show that we can have a school district that, that decreases the academic achievement gap. There just is a Yasi Martinez, all of that, all that discussion about Yasi Martinez is here at three point one and three point two. And it's important for the public and the head to know that we're incorporating this whole business into our, our own, uh, or the evaluation of how we're gonna be, how effective we are along with his. So we all need to be focused together on instructional leadership. I don't have much to, to say about changing things.
Yeah.
On this, so if we, you know, or class, well, oh, she's gone, let's, let's, let's go, let's skip to three point two. We finished, we're down to, oh, you didn't, I'm just saying that.
I heard the door, the restroom, maybe?
Probably. I think I heard the door.
I think somebody else left.
Oh, somebody else left?
I need to audit her.
Oh, okay, I was like, I just heard the door. One of the things though, laying on disaggregated student performance showing progress for all subgroups as available and or disembargoed, I'm not sure about the disembargoed stuff. But what I, what, what, what this implies, that, uh, when it says for all subgroups, that means that when we look at the school's direction. Ooh, I made focus now. They have to be, is this warmed up for us?
Yes. Ice cream on the head.
Oh, well, just in case. Um, just in case.
I'm trying to sweeten everybody up.
We're done with. If you black out or hit his ice cream, we're probably down to the off period.
I'm gonna leave this down here to keep sweetening guy.
I will remind you massively that tomorrow night is a late night as well.
Agreed.
Is that something I forgot to tell?
Three of them.
Yes, Albuquerque, the region meeting in Albuquerque.
Oh, she's gonna.
At Uptown.
I forgot. I said yesterday night.
You sure did. So we're through.
We're through with, um.
We're on three point two. We're on three point two.
Excellent. We're, we're on seven point two. Indicator two, uh, develops and implements a plan to appropriately include students' cultural backgrounds, languages and history into standards based curriculum. Apply culturally and linguistically responsive education, CLRE, and social emotional learning, SEL, to enhance the appreciation of cultural diversity and strength building. Key evidence, curriculum documentation incorporating tribal and local cultural content. Documentation of SEL initiatives tied to cultural identity. Classroom implementation evidence, for example, lesson work or observations demonstrating integration of CLRE and SEL strategies. Getting down to the rubric and the ratings of one would be no evidence of cultural SEL integration. A two would be documentation showing minimal or token inclusion. Three would be curriculum and SEL practices documented but unevenly applied. Or would be consistent documentation of cultural SEL integration across classrooms and positive student and parent feedback. Five would be comprehensive exemplary documentation of cultural responsiveness with student empowerment and tribal partnerships. I'm good with it.
This would be like all the donation with us.
And it would be what the district shares with us, yeah. Cause not only, I mean, the, the simple and easiest evidence is our once a month when Mr. Wyden recognizes the, the outstanding SEL employees. I mean, that's a, that's a simple piece of evidence right there, you know, but I think.
Goes up to the patient.
Yeah, I think what we would need is what, um, the back.
A link where he stops. Honest. I think we can document it, prove it. There would be evidence. And that would be a little more solid than anticipated. You know what I mean? Anticipating, I mean.
Well, the, the indicator drives everything. That's what you have to do. You have to do. Indicator, it's much easier to say. But we're basically just charging you with, with the leadership, your principals and everyone else. In other words, you're not gonna do this by yourself. That means we, we authorize you, we endorse your efforts, support your efforts to do this through your staff, through your principals, through whatever resources you need to accomplish this. You need to, uh, engage tribes or get consultants or whatever it is necessary to help you do this. Then you work that out with your team, with your principals, so that it is doable. We know that you're not gonna do it by yourself. We're just saying that we want you to be able to communicate to the, to your, to the district that this is important to me. It's important to the, the board's important to our communities. It's a one way in which we help students learn by connecting to who they are as part of their learning, reading and math and everything else. So that's what this is all about. And so you're gonna say, it's, uh, it's, I'll tell you where we're at at this time. And then March again will be the key milestone, so to speak. So if there's a need for discussion, even after the October meeting, you say you wanna sit down and say to us, I'd like to, I'd like to sit down with you guys at in the November meeting and just kind of give you a, what it's worth, what amount of this. And I may need some help. And we still be glad, because we want you to succeed. Actually, because if you succeed, then.
Then we're succeeding in this area.
So, so you're saying to us, we, we have some, we have to do this with that, or I'm not getting this done. Or something else.
Yeah, well, and I'd like, I, go ahead, Walter.
So he understands the five, is that what you're talking about, the five?
But I think one of the things that we also need to talk about when we're talking about the students in our district is not just, you know, the, the Native American students. We need to talk about the culture of, you know, agriculture in this community and what the land grant kids are as well. And what curriculum, you know, is in there for them? What curriculum is in there for, you know, the ELL students and everything like that? And I think all of that is very documentable, don't you think, Mr. Wyden?
It does send their cultural, that's the student department. It basically just says tribal and local cultural content, but that can be.
Absolutely.
We do recognize what Yasi Martinez is saying, but we also recognize that, uh, every child has their cultural identity that they need to, uh, uh, feel positive about.
Absolutely.
Whatever it is.
Absolutely.
Wherever they came from.
Absolutely.
Um, and whoever they are.
Yep.
Uh, when they leave here, they, they leave with that cultural identity.
Intact.
Intact, very good.
Yep.
So that's, this is gonna be a work in progress. So let's see what we do with that. I don't have any changes to.
Thank you, sir. Board members, Ron.
I'm fun.
Walter. All right. Number indicator four point one, we're moving on to staff relations. So indicator four point one states, meets with staff regularly, formally and informally at administration office and at each work site, addresses staff concerns efficiently and acknowledges employee achievements. Key evidence would be documentation of site visits and informal conversations, recog- recognition records, awards, newsletters, agendas, staff meetings, feedback documentation. So ratings, as far as the rubric goes, a one would be rare staff meetings, no documentation. A two would be earned with limited meetings or recognition and incomplete documentation. A three would be regular documented meetings, concerns addressed, recognition records present. A four would be consistent documentation of meetings, concerns resolved and achievements highlighted. And five would be exemplary documentation showing proactive transparent engagement and equitable recognition. Lane, how do you, how do you think the evidence ties in as far as the, the ratings go? Cause I think that's been our trend is, you know, what do you, what do you think the, it takes to get a four and a five? What are types of evidence you're able to give us on, on those?
So I would think that this is one that I'm doing data. Like, today I was at three different school sites and, and had meetings and agendas and all of that. So I think that would be documentation of site visits. We've also got the pictures and, and I know with Mrs. Hunt daily, one time we talked about, well, how does a picture really show that you're there, you know, and so, but, and I usually try to keep my site visits to be purposeful and having a reason. So, um, and, and I think, I think that the first evidence would be pretty easy to compile. Second one, we have a newsletter, we have recognitions. We do, you, you as a board recognize folks for SEL, for, um, academic, you know, we're, we're recognizing our kids that have done well in CTE programs. And so I, I think we have pretty good evidence of that. And then staff meetings. I have, I have central office staff meetings. We have one on Tuesday. We have monthly staff meetings here. But then also, when I'm at sites, I'm in PLCs and kind of sitting in there in classrooms. So I think that would be something that you'd wanna document, you know, follow through, especially with, with the rollout of the, the Marzoni strategies and engagement strategies. So that would probably be, Ron, we're, we would upload those, those checklists and those, those tools that we provide for professional help. I would think they're attainable, all of them.
Board members, do you have questions, comments on this one?
No, like you said, that's something that he would have to insert. If we go back to the evidence, you'd have to look at what he's been doing, which makes sense. Where you're at throughout the ninety days, or maybe just every ninety days, every four months.
Yeah, we're five, four to five months to the next one. I think initially, Mr. Wyden, what we talked about is creating the habit of dropping that information, you know, the drive. And I think you probably have a lot of the evidence. It's just a matter of, you know, pulling from your, your daily calendar, where you've been, what you've done, and just, uh, I don't know, I, I don't need more than a little blurb, you know, went to, went to early college, talked to unruly blonde headed board member's child and you know, something, just something to let us know. You know, I, I don't think I need more than that because again, I think one of the things that I have said over and over again, your time is so valuable at the school sites, your time is so valuable with not just, you know, your staff here at, at central office, but across the district. Because that's how you lead, right? And I think that if we're having you create too, too much, too detailed, you're gonna be spending more time in your office chair than you are observing in the classrooms, being involved in those PLCs and, and doing, you know, the professional development that the district needs you to do to help get our scores improving, help getting, you know, our, our kids improved. That's, again, I'm, I'm one opinion of, of five up here, but that would be what I would be looking for as far as that.
There's the, this is what you was into. We don't know what you're doing. We, we know what you're doing, but you're.
The minutia, a little, a little bit.
The, um, most important part that I think of this one is, is staff receptions. You know how to do this?
Yeah.
And so you wanna know, are they, are they, are the teachers and the staff at the school satisfied and are they motivated? If they're not, then I need some feedback. That's what it says here. Most important thing one has to do is to ensure that you're, that the, that the employees are feeling good about what the going aggression that's been taken and the support that has been provided to them. And so staff inevitably, as we know, historically are gonna have their daily concerns because teaching is a challenging experience. And you're going to feel moments of, um, of pride in what the kids are doing and you're gonna be frustrated on occasion. But sometimes there are certain systemic things that are occurring within the schools that are causing some problems. So what are their concerns? And so what I'm looking for is this one, those to look at, I've been looking for, are we, are we putting, are we finding out how the, how the, what the climate is in the school? The organization of climate, the school climate. Are there any issues that they're, that they're concerned with? And I might, and it says here, uh, It's just a documentation of meetings, concerns resolved, and achievements highlighted. When it comes to achievements, I think we ideally would like to highlight and recognize the achievement of not just individuals, but larger groups, you'd want to do all three hundred teachers in. But we, but there must be some more effective way in which when we, when we recognize an individual, we're seeking to motivate them to continue with their excellence, whatever it is that they're doing. We would want to do that for all the teachers. Are there any mechanisms? Anything that the schools are going to acknowledge achievements? Sometimes schools and teachers do that, they will have, they will recognize student performance in the classroom, they'll say, I'd like to bring up Johnny for the good work they did out in this, I want to bring up this group kids, and they did an excellent job. How do we do that at the school level? That's what I would be looking for when it comes to this, so.
Can I add to that, sir?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Weidner, I've seen on Facebook, you have school site that have a staff member and the teacher of the month, every month. They're recognizing, you know, at their site somebody outstanding for what they're doing. And they, you know, they say why and they give a little, I mean, I think that guy, isn't that kind of what you're looking at, or are you looking at Mr. Weidner's?
Anything that's systemic. Oh. You're basically leading charge of recognizing, motivating, satisfying. Motivation comes from recognition. Satisfaction comes from addressing issues that may be causing them to be frustrated. Are you satisfied if, if it's, um, it could be the problems that were happening in Missaview with, uh, just some of these physical maintenance stuff that were, and it gets in the way of what they're doing, or it could be a lot of things, but the only way you know that is by getting, by having them express their concerns. So if we don't hear any, if we feel that there's no problems in the district, that would be hard to
Imagine.
Imagine. So how do you, how do you, uh, when you die, when you have meetings? Or if you talk with your team, how do we get a sense of things are going?
Can I ask you a question, Guy? Do you remember, and this was right when Walter and I started and for maybe a portion of, of the last school year. Mr. Weidner gave us a, an email every week with the school site that he visited, who he was with, and then what the directors uh, did as far as their site visits and, and things like that, and in that, and again, it's been a while since I've looked at one because it morphed into the newsletter. But with that kind of documentation, Guy, do you think that going back to what Mr. Weidner was originally doing, where he every week would tell us the school sites where he was and what was going on? Do you have one of those handy, Mr. Weidner? I know it's been a while. I, I don't remember exactly what you had in those, but I know that was, you know, I we, we got those every week. Well, can I get you a little?
Like Guy says, we only hear about the mechanical issues, you know, we hear, hey, we don't have no heat, we don't have no air conditioning. But there's more that's happened, so. It basically says on this part, I, I don't have any coffee, that's what's upsetting for me. I, I have to have coffee. I don't want to get coffee, then I'll be pissed.
They don't hold it back for me every five minutes.
It says in the indicator. You're to address staff concerns efficiently. So if you don't put anything down, say, there's no staff concerns, so I didn't have to do anything about it. We'd say, really? So.
I was just thinking you had something at one point that was already formatted.
I had a template.
Maybe that kind of thing could be.
Well, and that one's actually from before you were.
It says here, once again, how do you address staff concerns efficiently? And that's what you'd have to think through, brainstorm that. And, um, think about that, cause there's always something that's gonna come up. And it may be a, you know, a satisfaction with, um, with the with the decision on, on the use of certain, uh, instructional time. Or, but basically just say, how do we resolve issues in this district when they come on? And, and that you hire principals to be efficient with having the organization be efficient in what it's doing and the respect it, and that's, that's cool. And there are going to be issues that may be more systemic within the district. There may be issues that are just manifested in a single school. How do you resolve, how do you help? You may not be the one to solve the problem, you may say to the principal, uh, you know, I think this is an issue that could stand in some corrosion, so telling you to address those issues, either directly or indirectly, and report back to us. If the teachers are dissatisfied with the pay and they want to increase it to another ten thousand dollars, you need to be able to figure out how to do that. I'm being facetious. The teachers probably say, no, that's real. Um, but it's, it's that, it's that, is that while we cannot recognize achievement, how do we make achievement be, um, recognized, systematically recognized throughout the district so that everybody feels that, that, that that energy of me, of having their, their, their school, their group perform well. And then on the other hand, is if we have some, some problems that, that department has surfaced. And that's what leadership is all about, dealing with problems. How do we resolve those problems for staff? So I understand that.
I think I printed that just so I can, I didn't want it on the screen. Which is why I quit. If you would have any candy. Break down the hall.
Break down the hall.
Got it.
Yeah.
What, they're gonna get some puppy?
I think I'll get you some if you want.
Well, I don't want.
Can we, can we? Yeah.
Oh, seven good one?
Yes. I only printed one of these.
I don't know, four point two. Uh, all the rest of them are pretty much subjective, I mean, they're sort of objective, uh, abjective.
Obie, objective.
Objective. Objective is a result.
Of the objective.
Guy, I just sent you the PDF of a sample communication from Mr. Weidner. And it's.
Which one?
It just says communication. It will take us, anyway, it, it's a sample of what and four point two we're okay with, so we're ready for community relations. This one is, uh, Ron's favorite. Decrease dropout rate and improve the graduation rate for high school students. Isn't that your favorite sermon?
Yep. It's gotten better, really.
I think we probably, Guy, on this one. And then on five point one, the community relations. I think we probably need to look at maybe choosing a better word descriptor for the key evidence, longitudinal data. I think we probably. That's, that's what I just emailed you. This was, this was the sample that Mr. Weidner uh, had provided.
We haven't seen the top yet. Tuesday, I guess, September, this week. Yeah, this is what he was studying about, he said something certainly, yeah. Uh, the only challenge is there, they have very topics.
Good, okay, so we're right here, sir, on the sample that you gave us. And we all agreed that four point two is fine as it is. And we're moving to five point one, but Guy was gonna give us his last feedback on
What, the communication of the week?
The communication of the week.
That was to be specifically for board members.
Yeah. Right.
That's, all I'm saying is that you can continue with something similar to that. geared towards evaluation. Uh, but you would have to make sure that you be able to designate which one goes with which. Does it go with, uh, indicator one, indicator two, which indicator does it go with? And that's doable.
Yeah.
You just have to, you just have to.
Fly it.
Uh, exactly, we have to fly, put a little column there. Say, okay, this goes with one point two, this goes with three point one, or whatever it is, and so, so that we will only look at it that, that way. It may go with maybe two, I go with maybe two indicators.
Absolutely.
Something like that.
Well, kind of how he's been doing the agendas, you know, you know what we're following.
Well, I think. Well, that's exactly right, Walter, and I think what we've been saying kind of all along is that some of these things are repetitive. But also, some of the evidence that you're gonna provide us can go in multiple spots.
There is.
You know, and so don't, don't be afraid to share it, you know, more than, in more than one spot.
Well, just a little comment, uh, do you still have that mentor? That mentor?
On me.
I have two mentors.
Two, really? No, you're the one that makes all the decisions. Do they help you? I mean, do you need a mentor?
Usually I, I mean, usually it's just advice.
So what do you, I think a better question, I'm, I'm gonna help you with this one. What are your advisors doing for you? How are you utilizing your advisors? Does that work?
Yeah.
So Mrs. Lightfoot is
Yeah.
She is kind of working with the administrative team, the district leaders, working with Amanda on the procedures. So that way all of our procedures and policies are aligned, the, the systems. And that's kind of become a lot of her work. Uh, she and I have started, she usually comes three days a month. And we've started doing like dinners on the first Monday, so that way we can kind of collaborate about what the outcomes for the week are gonna be, um, when she comes in, and then my other mentor is through the PED Priority Schools Bureau. And we're, we're in that program, that SOR program, and so he's, he's a mentor through that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And his is a lot of conversation. Just kind of bouncing ideas and telling them our strategies and thought.
And you know, the only reason I bring it up because I, I really feel that you're the one that's doing the job.
Yeah.
I mean, and you know, I mean, you already know, I believe that, you know, you know what's going on. If you don't by now.
We should be worried.
We should be worried.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, I think.
And I don't got nothing against, I, I was never.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, is you guys hired somebody that's never been super. Yeah, yeah, but I wanted him to learn by the rocks, you know. And I used to be, I came in thinking, yeah, I'll do what he's doing, but you, and you're doing good, like I said, you've done, you've done a whole when I just said that, and demonstration.
He's already, yeah.
Not there, but he's there.
Yeah.
It's probably a good time to
Great.
Take the training wheels off.
No, no. He went down the hall.
He said he had to leave.
Yeah, it says I can't. Walter, coffee, are you okay? Do you wanna?
I'm quite a bit tired.
There's hot water. Hot chocolate?
I got water here. I'm not trying to make it harder. In fact, I'm trying to, hey, you know. You have a lot of water now, you know.
Yeah. It's, it's time to, time to.
Well, I think, I think, I'm gonna echo what Ron is saying here in that, you know, you've you have shown so much growth. And I think that we want you to have the support that you think that you need. But we also have told you repeatedly, you know, we want you to be the one in charge, we want you to be running the district.
Not there.
You know?
And I know they're gonna go to them because sometimes the leader's gonna be the last one to know.
Yeah. Like I said, all of the pages, maybe you're on the front base of you. Other than maybe there's a whole situation based on you.
Yeah. Your coffee arrived, sir.
Oh, I should be at the last, no, three hours now.
No, sir. Take it away, take it away.
Sorry, sorry.
All right, we're we're now on section five point one, sir. Just a couple to go.
Sugar halfway.
But I know what is sweet for sure. No, we agreed to four point two, but I don't know if I put. Yes, yes.
Five point one is.
Community relations. And this was the one I was telling. Mr. Ortiz, he's gonna really like. Indicator five point one, community relations. Decrease dropout rate and improve the graduation rate for high school students. And then what I was saying, I don't like. Longitudinal data. I just don't like the word longitudinal. And I I I chatted it. Cause we were we're learning this. So. Or, yeah, for an evaluation instrument, the phrase longitudinal data can sound a bit too research heavy. Or clinical. Here are some better descriptors you might consider. Growth data, progress measures, trend data, performance over time. Outcome data, progression evidence, long term measures, cohort progress. So my my only. Thought on. The key evidence, which is longitudinal data on dropout and graduation by subgroup. Intervention program documentation, credit recovery mentoring. Board presentations on graduation improvement strategies. Literally the key evidence, I just think that we need to. Have a better descriptor than longitudinal data.
What was the second?
I like outcome data.
Uh, growth data, progress measures, outcome data, progression evidence. Long term measures. Cohort progress.
Cohort progress, progression progress is pretty.
But that's also pretty high school, not everybody else. In my mind. Because everything that we talk about cohort wise. Ties into. Our our high school graduation.
However. Most of our dropouts. Are high, are in high.
If I can relate to we have. Them leaving. Two, three. Ten.
In some ways, we have a vocal opposite. Population and and more so after the pandemic, because now. In the time that since I've been the superintendent. We've lost at least sixty kids that have opted to, I wanna be online, I wanna go, you know. I I don't. Traditional school is not for me, and so. So. And so that's why you see us doing things like the partnership with the Cyber Academy, where we're. We're trying to get those kids back.
The people transitioned them. Through the through the cyber program, the Pickles, right? Still, are they still considered our students?
They're still our students.
They're still our students. Did they graduate with us?
Yeah.
So they'll come in and graduate.
So so they they will graduate with their cohort. So.
And are we making progress?
We are, we we don't have a lot of students, we we've also. We also subscribe to an online program called Subject Subjects dot com. And that one's pretty effective as well for for our kids that wanna work online from home. You know, and. And find success that way, so. It's it's interesting now, because there's so many, we still have edgenuity. Uh, edgenuity is part of a credit recovery. Right, and so. There's a lot of good options and and. And variety for kids.
And what do you think of the credit changing, you think that would improve?
It's gonna be a little bit crazy for you guys, because. I mean, you look at the last few months, the last two meetings, three meetings. We've we've had at least seven kids come talk to us about graduating early. And. And now we've lessened the credit requirements, so you're gonna see kids that are really advancing through high school. Rap. Um, but that could be really good for those kids that are at risk. Doing so.
Yeah, I'll come back, who knows? Tell, tell us a good question.
Very good question. So what do we, Guy?
I like outcome data.
Yeah, because it could be negative and that could be.
Cause we want, we wanna see outcomes and and. Ultimately, it's that they're learning the standards and that they're. They're getting their education.
Well.
Cause it's data specifically on dropout and graduation rubrics. By subgroup. So that would be.
That does fall under high school, I guess, I did that.
That would be out the cohort.
You like outcomes? When that's to assemble. Uh, that's specifically for probably the. High school, I guess, that.
Well, five point one is specifically for the high school. So decrease dropout rate and improve the graduate. agenda, I think I'm freezing everybody out, do you wanna?
Would you bring some of it in so we can build fire?
Yeah.
That's Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah. The outcome data on dropout. Slash graduation by subgroup.
So you do have sub two line what?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's. You look at the rubrics. In order for you to get a four, this is what you need to produce. You get a three, you need to produce. Thing, so when we look at. Does do the evidence match up with the rubrics? So. You need to collect evidence that there's significant gains documented across subgroups. You need to provide uh evidence that there's systemic supports and partnerships in place. Uh, that means when you say partnerships, who are you partnering with, you have to document. Wouldn't be, who would be affected partners for the. For the high schools. Now, each both high schools, they are they are different. Different, um.
Did I just say it has a pay code?
Well, I mean, high schools. LA High School and Grant's High School. And so the demographics are different. And and ninety percent of the LA kids are are Native American. So. When I look at significant gains documented across subgroups. What do we, what do we mean by that? What judgment do we? How do we judge that that a gain is significant? So if you have a. One hundred students. Who are juniors. Or actually, it's basically saying that, um. That if you had a hundred, if you had, um. A quarter of a hundred kids in a school, in a high school senior class. And ninety percent, eighty-five percent of them graduated. What would be a significant gain, gain the next year? Would it be, uh, we consider, uh, ninety-one percent to be significant?
Well, let's compare what our data for the district is here, though.
What is it?
Because early college high school is one hundred percent. Laguna Akama said that they were a hundred percent. This last year. And GHS reported to us that they were ninety-seven percent. So how do you, how do you show significant gain? You know, that's that's. What if, what if we say two more kids graduating or three more kids that. Uh, GHS would, you know, bump you up.
So.
However. That doesn't always take into account those kids that. Go from Laguna Akama to Santa Fe Indians. You know what I mean? So there, the hope is that they're still graduating. With their cohort.
So then maybe the the cohort. Is the better, is the better information to put in here. Rather than longitudinal.
Well, yeah, I'm trying, well. Longitudinal basically means that you look over multiple years.
Of course.
So, you know, you would, uh, look. If we were to start now, we'd look at, this is twenty, twenty twenty-six, right? So then you're gonna compare, gonna look at the next three years, that's a longitudinal. Or you use the word trend, trend basically means that you look over more than two years, you look at three years.
Yep.
Growth, that's a trend.
Yep.
And and the trend is upwards, then that's the same thing as longitudinal, so it is, this may be different. What I think we need to do, though, is to is to. Is to figure out what, uh, what is it that we consider to be the big rate? You're saying that it's hundred percent in the, and at the LA. And at, uh, Grant's High School, it's ninety-seven percent, so there's not a problem. But then on the other hand, in the state, they show that the graduation rate for. For, um. They have a different, um, rate. And that's what they they compute. And that's what the state goes by, is by the. Their good, their calculation of what the graduation rate is, not what what our principals say. I'm looking at twenty twenty-three, the rate for the district was twenty seventy-two point seven. So there's there's a, it's a fluid between what you're saying. As being a hundred percent or a hundred percent and what the state says in twenty twenty-three.
So I think that we would need to find out how they're calculating. Their data and take into consideration what Mr. Weidner just said. Because if we have kids that have started here. But have left and gone to other districts or dropped out. Or chose online, you know, as their. Way to graduate or not. You know, that that data isn't what the principals are sharing with us. They're sharing with us. What they started with at the beginning of the school year and then what graduate, correct?
Right.
So, you know, I think what you're saying, Guy, we a hundred percent need to take into consideration.
And the state's value on.
Covert. Um, and what they say, the graduation.
And that's the cohort.
And, um, so. I thought I had grants here. At LA, which was eighty-four. In twenty twenty-three, I'm not sure. Uh, um, I mean, LA, I don't know about the grants, I don't know why I have that. Well, what I'm saying is that. That I remember one time, one of the high school principals, sometime ago, said that they had a hundred percent, but the actual rating came up to be less than that. So the, we have to understand. How the, how the state computes graduation rate, they do it by cohorts. They start with, uh. The ninth grade, they say, okay, who do you have in the ninth grade? That's your cohort. And what happens to them from nine, ten, eleven, twelve? And when any of them leave during that time, do any of them come back? There's a little trick to, what if you have a kid that goes to a Santa Fe Indian school and they're in the tenth grade? Then they come back at the twelfth grade, how do you count those kids? It's it's our little garden, so kind of tricky, but they they. Do with those other kids.
Right.
So when we have kids going to the early college. They're not part of the graduation rate for, um. They're part of the district graduation rate, but they're not the part of either LA High School or Grant's High School's graduation rate. And you would think that if they're in current college high school, that they more than likely are going to graduate in time. Don't it, don't it trick with them is that what if they were in Grant's High School for three years and decided to go to early college? You know, in the last year or something like that.
For sure, well, I mean, we've got a couple of kids that moved over. You know, this year, so it, I get that.
Yeah.
So how do we, so Mr. Weidner, we were asking. The F.
Look at, look at five, you know, by itself, would five be reachable?
There we go, we're back. Well, but I think, Guy, what you're getting at is the evidence, right?
I'm I'm looking at the, uh. What we're going to measure is performance, but it's the rating.
So you're looking at the rubric.
That drives where I'm looking at a way to get a five or how we would give you a five or.
I I think a four would be.
Well, you know, four, but like I said, five.
Showing significant rate gains be.
Well, that's the pandemic.
But there might be a really good year.
Not realistically able to get.
Like last year. We had. Those were pretty good gains.
Yeah.
I don't know that we have. But last year, they were good gains. Then you look at this year, and we also have a lot of early graduates.
Yeah.
That could be good, too.
Trend data, just change that to trend data. Is it again, there's a year? Rates, I guess. When I looked at the, um, Grant's High School, the, uh, dashboard, maybe not include graduation as a, you know, as a, you know. Area of, um. Focus. So. And maybe it's because of the perception that that how. The local calculation of. What the graduation rate is. Which may differ from what the state is doing, state is saying, this is. And there are some controversies with respect to. That calculation that they, that state does do. But it is the one that drives. All things. And I I don't have, I had, I did have, um. Some of the others, but I don't have. So I would, I don't wanna spend any more time on it, I think that we are.
Five point two.
You ought to.
Very good. Indicator five point two. Increased meaningful engagement of parents and guardians with emphasis on parents. Of academically at-risk students. Improvement in student information systems should occur, which is SIS. Key evidence would be. Parent engagement event records with subgroup participation rates. Tribal parent advisory council minutes. Documentation on CIS usability and family engagement data. Mr. Weidner, what do you think about those? Evidence, because. Now's the time to change if those things aren't.
Well, it's interesting, because statewide, we're going through a statewide student information. So. And. All districts are going to adopt synergy, which is the one we're utilizing. I would say.
I didn't even read those, let me read those out loud just for everybody. So, uh, for the rubric, uh, one rating would be no documentation of engagement. And SIS is ineffective, and two would be limited documentation of engagement at-risk parents minimally involved. Three would be regular engagement documented. Uh, CIS from his functional and moderate subgroup participation. Four would be strong documentation of parent engagement and accessibility. And five would be exemplary document tape. Engagement documented with tribal leadership and at-risk parents as co-leaders.
So I think about, I think globally, district-wide. A four. We have Parents Night, we have Math Night, we have Father Daughter Dances, we have, I'm thinking about elementary schools. Um, we had. Silent auction the other day at Mount Taylor. Um, we had silent auction the other day at Mount Taylor, we have grandparents who are there like crazy, we had grandparents day. So I think we'd be near the mark at a four. Well, and then then you you look at secondary level, we had. Junior Honor Society, we have athletic events, we have the. You know, we have the band concert, there's a band concert at the Salomita's next week.
Okay, but what about at risk? You know, because this this one, I mean, that's not just, this one isn't just talking about. Globally, as you're saying, this indicator says increased meaningful engagement of parents and guardians. With emphasis on parents of academically at-risk students. Improvement in student information system should occur. So how do you how do you take that and and? I'm asking about the evidence, you know, is parent engagement event records with subgroup participation rates? Is that something that's doable? Tribal parent advisory council minutes, I think that one is. A little bit easier, just because we know when the meetings occur. You know, you get an an automatic reply from, I think, Mr. Valdo. You know, that what the minutes are, the agenda and things like that. But then documentation on Cis usability and family engagement data. So that, I mean, if you're looking at those three evidences. Does the rubric align with those and how do you provide that evidence?
So, again, those are, so. I wish Mr. Sanchez had been here tonight that has talked about Yosé Martinez. There are the subgroups that are fall under the that. And the majority of our kids, ninety-five percent, fit into one of those sub. Right, so you're you're looking at it's who. Are low socioeconomic, you're looking at students who have I Ds, you're looking at. Uh English language learners, you're looking at Native American students. And so. Those are considered at-risk groups, right?
So what parent?
So.
I don't understand the at-risk parent.
The parents of at-risk children.
No, they're of the children.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I don't think their parents, they care if they came or not, or wasn't helping.
So all of those events that we have. All of those events that we have that get those parents there, um like. We talked about a partnership with the county where we provide free entry to the game, free entry to the. The band concert, those kinds of things are targeted for socioeconomic families and so I think. That's documented, right, and and then when it says, you know, how is that? How is that documented in the student information system? Well, we have our attendants that are calling and providing interventions and. Calling, like today was Be Here New Mexico Day where, you know, the the idea was that kids were supposed to be at school, so I think. It very much marries very well, um. The five, I think in order to earn the five, I. Would definitely want to include kind of the student success conversations with. Miss Lino and and Akuma Department of Education, Laguna Department of Education. And and talk about how we're trying to create interventions for those kids that are at risk, right? And so I think for the five, you'd have to you'd have to really show that you're. Meeting with tribal leadership, tribal educators.
Like I said. Accessible, I say, is available.
I think it is, I think it is because we regularly have those meetings. We we have those meetings every ten weeks. And it says tribal leadership, you know, and we do have tribal consultations twice a year. So. I I think it's a challenge, I think I think that one is is reachable.
And I think you want to go buy my son on TV in Washington. Yeah, he was one of the whip for chocolate candy, he was in the front, he was one of the top.
Oh, okay. Pretty neat, Guy, thoughts?
The word meaningful. Meaningful to whom? But I see meaningful engagement of parents and guardians. It's back to what Walter was saying, the only thing that is meaningful is if those kids. Are academically successful, they make it. So our goal, the only goal that we have as board is to is to. Is to ensure that our school system increasingly generates more academically successful kids. Everything that we do needs to lead to that. All the decisions we make about curriculum, instruction materials, instructional time. All lead to, will this will this help improve the chances that kids are going to succeed? Always succeed, what are the results? Did it did it make a difference? If it didn't make a difference, then why are we doing it? And that's what chief principals do and teachers do, you know, that lesson didn't work, toss that lesson out, you're gonna do a different lesson. You know, or or if the activity didn't bring a lot of kids in there, or they're not really interested, now let's don't do that again, let's do a different. Different activity with the kids so that they are interested in coming. Sometimes high schools will do a lot of different kinds of things, trying to get motivated, just some things work, some things don't. We have to do that too. So when we say parental engagement. It must it must be, it must have, it must add value, it must it must improve the education of their kids. A teacher wants parental engagement. And sometimes they want it more often with certain kids, because there are certain kids. That need that extra support from the parents, the parents need to show up. They need to know, they need to know the truth. But why they're not turning in the homework? Or something, so meaningful means that it affects student performance. Going to um programs is nice. But for adverse populations to increase their chances of success, we must create more um. Meaningful kinds of things that are going to help the individual parent. A lot of times that could be like parent training. You say, and and I can tell you, teach teachers and principals will say that there's a lot of parents who don't come to those things. But you gotta offer them. You gotta somehow figure out a way to create something meaningful. Going to basketball games, football ballgames is is not everybody's cup of tea. But that's not what those are for, those are to provide grounded educational experience for kids. In the area of sports.
Those kids are already making the grade.
And so and so there's an incentive in order for you to participate, you gotta. And so the parents are are watching over whether or not you did your homework this week, so you can stay stay eligible. But there's too many other kids who's who are the and are. The Yosé Martinez says in the state of New Mexico, these adverse populations. Are are not succeeding, and one way of helping to to improve their success is by having. Parents be more actively involved with the education of their kids. They need to understand what it is that the kids are learning, they need to know what it is that they can do to support what they're doing in the school. What kind of activities can we provide for the parents that will help them be much more meaningfully engaged? Not only with the school, but with their own child. I think in the bottom line is whenever we try to bring parents in, we want them to to translate that into better home. Uh activities that are supportive of that kid. And so we want it, we want to improve the quality of parenting of kids by the things that we do in school. And so we've gone to, I remember the first year, we went to quite a few things, so. Uh when when we were, I remember when you go into Mesa View, they're doing their reading stuff and all that, that was exciting. So that that will be a major cap, that'll be on the on the on on this thing.
The math night.
Yeah, math nights, reading nights, language nights, um.
But so what are you, so.
What I'm saying to you is that um is that we need to be able to distinguish between the kinds of things that. We should, you should put down the things that are going to make a difference, academic. Some things that we're doing, we don't necessarily do that. Particularly for adverse populations, that means that every principal needs to identify with the teacher, which of the parents deserve. A greater push in interventions.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to what you said earlier. You said parent training, right? I've been saying for years, one of the first conversations I ever had with your predecessor was. We need to get back to helping parents know how they can help their children. But Guy, what you said immediately within that statement about needing the parent training is. Even when parents don't come, we need to offer it. And I think that that's something that probably COVID changed incredibly. Is that, well, we're not even gonna bother offering it because nobody's gonna show up. If one parent comes because they want to help their themselves do better for their student. It should happen, you know, and I think that everybody, and I'm saying this globally. Everybody has gotten to where it's, well, you know, I I we just shouldn't do it because only a few people are gonna come. Well, uh a few people can make a huge difference. And so maybe that would be something that would be really good across your whole district, eleven school site. Is to get more of these parent training, parent engagement kind of opportunities and. You know, I know the principals don't always love, especially at the secondary level, doing that kind of stuff because. They are doing so much with sports, so much with all the clubs and and things like that, so. Clubs and and sports, those are easier to document for you, right, Mike? Those are easy, you you know when the games are, you know when the clubs, you know, have things going on, but. I think what we're all realizing here is what about for the parents? Helping the kid, and so that, I think we're asking, how is that attainable, right, Guy?
Well, the board has to say, do we consider that to be important? If we say, if we say that it's important. Then we have to say, bless their hearts, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, if you got a way to encourage your parents. To be involved with their, and that's that's what we are supposed to do.
Yeah, it's right here.
Though you don't want to do, we still gotta say to your parents, oh, it's it's your time, you've got under twelve years, that's it.
Well, here we are.
And there's different ways to do it, you just have to be creative, I I know sometimes it. Like that grandparents day, a lot of schools don't like doing it because not all the grandparents show up, so then all these get to, all these kids get to go with their grandpas, their grandmas. And then the, let's say that whole classroom clears out and then one kid sits in the classroom.
I know.
Maybe can we get me, so you know, so I, that's what, but a lot of teachers or pe- people are reluctant to, they want the parents to come. But not all of them come, there'll be like two or three kids that my mom didn't come. And they're left out of the, you know, they're left in the classroom or they went to whatever, but I like the idea that you guys are talking about was. Let's have dinner, everybody, a a late dinner, everybody come, you know, right, bring your parents in, we work on your homework, you know, there's different ways to. To do that, I mean, you you would have to, your principals have to be creative to get those parents in, I mean, that is the key, is getting those parents in. One of the, one of the, one of the um. Characteristics of effective schools is when there is a, when there are, when it is documented that there's positive relationships between the parent and the teacher. And and the way positive relationships are created is when there are, when it's personal relationship. That means one-to-one, phone calls, the uh uh any any concerted effort on the part of the parents, the teacher to. To engage that child and to be persistent. And because there are some parents who who need that extra, at least they're not gonna let me go, I have to go because they're gonna call me again. Because we're gonna call you again, because we want you to know that we are vested in your child and we want to show you the. Strengths your child has, but we also need to have you recognize that there's some uh challenges that your child has had.
Yeah.
That means you have, he hasn't been, he hasn't been there, this and doing that, but you have to do that. That's one of the challenges that 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 we have, we have economically disadvantaged communities.
It's challenging and heartbreaking, because you're so sorry for that kid.
Because you and I know.
Challenges.
Of families that are challenged.
Yeah.
And we know their children. There's a lot of broken families and grandparents are taking care of them and grandparents don't stay home and go to bed.
Yeah.
I have other kids besides what you're calling the. As a five born besides one that you're probably.
So whatever person makes one with two on this one. Is not to start doing activities, is to go find out stuff about your parents, that means if you are needs assess. Assess the need. And so if you were to, if you were to start creating activities, it's gonna be hit or miss, like Walter said. Some grandparents are gonna come somewhere not, well, maybe that wasn't the right thing to do, so we need to find out who are our parents. What are the characteristics of our family settings? So many, you know, so that that would be a a. A more organized way to find out what's going on.
So now.
We can fix that, then we can fix the war, fix the war.
But so now, if I'm looking at the at the rubric for now. We would, we would be expecting, you know, to see regular engagement documented for the three. That uh Cis is functional and moderate subgroup participation. But I think that that needs assessment would be. Part of how you would achieve that knowledge, just right there for a straight three. You know.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Well.
But it's attainable.
Eighty-five percent of our families have synergy on their phone. Is that Cis engagement?
Sure.
There's there's. Centered danger, do we still have problems like we used to?
Well, I think that higher school, higher school was what.
Was better than.
Everybody liked, but then we moved to synergy.
Right.
I've never had a problem with synergy. But I'm fairly tech literate.
That face, yes, they have it, they come in and they say. Son has a D.
Yeah.
It's gotten better.
It's good, especially.
Yeah.
We haven't even, and we just have to teach them to use it.
Because I know like Trish is really good at it and I can send any parent a book and she helps them.
That'd be another way, we can parents and so teach them to learn.
So maybe a synergy update would be.
You have an I R T.
I do, I do. Harry has it on his phone and he uses it as a student, yeah. Yeah, because he'll come home and he'll pull up and say, see, Mom, I told you, I have done this or.
Turned in.
This is wonderful.
Good.
Yeah.
You look at the parent, get the parents all hooked up, something like that.
All right, so board members, let's let's finish up with five point two. I I think that we we kind of talked and talked and talked this one. But again, you know, we want you to be successful here. Do you feel like really rereading that, you're gonna have evidence that can support? Do you feel like really rereading that, you're gonna have evidence that can support you and the district and, and what's going on?
I would add a assess the status of parental parents in the school system, engagement.
Where, where?
On key evidence.
So parent engagement.
I would take.
On involvement.
Assess the, uh, assess parental engagement. Develop a, a strategy for assessing parental engagement, the, um.
So I wrote assess, let me make it bigger on the screen. So if you look up, or if you look on the screen, key evidence, assess, parent engagement, comma, involvement, comma, event records, with subgroup participation rates.
You can, um, there are, there are, since there's information on how one does that, how you, how you, um, survey, uh, and you can also include, um, uh, your stakeholder groups, you can, you can talk to the tribe, say to them, why do you think we can best assess the region which parents are engaged in their, in their, their, um, education of their kids, there's two ways, one internally, you assess what we're doing. Externally, you would then assess from their perceptions whether they are involved. External means you would actually ask parents to what extent are they involved with the education of their children. And internally, you would be looking at your structures and your systems. And then saying like she was mentioning, there are, you have tech, you have, uh, technology systems that are used to engage, to what extent are those useful? Are they successful to what extent their kids and parents? How frequent are parents communicating with, with the schools and their teachers? How do we track that? Particularly those parents whose children are at risk. That's what I think would be one of the most important things to be done.
What are the rooms at the school sites? When we were touring, you know, and there would be the red, yellow and green. And they would take the kids in and the kids owned their education. Like the one at Laguna Akama was the prime one. And we went into the big room and, yeah, they had all of their charts and the kids
That were yellow.
Were given a status of red, green or yellow.
The data room.
So, I mean, that right there is this for the kids.
Do the PLC room.
Yeah, PLC, thank you. But that, but that lane, that would be a start because in those PLC data rooms, you know, we were told that those kids that are in the red know that they're in the red and the parents know that the kids are in the red. That guy is the documentation that, you know, you're, you're talking about because you're wanting to know, you're wanting to share with us how the schools are engaging with the parents of those students at risk, so that right there, I mean, that's.
They're free on this risk.
Part of this right there.
Yeah, this is. Areas of assessment, there's this here, needs assessment should evaluate engagement across several dimensions. Number one, communication. Number two, school culture, that means do these, they're a sense of, of, um, welcoming of myself, my children to, to the school. Learning at home, to what extent are the kids learning at home, community partnerships? All do well, do we communicate with other entities in the school, in the district, in the community? Family empowerment, do the fam- parents feel empowered? Do they have a voice in decision making? Equity inclusivity, do engagement efforts address the needs of all families, particularly those? So you form an assessment team. Decide which areas of family engagement you want to assess. Select the data, review. Develop a plan. Cause right now, what happens in most schools is you do it on your own, it's, it's on the fly. What are we gonna do? It's one of the last things we decide and it's usually, um, as we say, not as productive as we want, in other words, not to make the parents show up. We know which things they will show up at. But what do we want? Academic success in ELA, maths, science. We want those. We want successful teams, but we also want suc- successful students academically. That's what drive, that's why we're here. So if you can do something to assess how can improve parental engagement, that would be fantastic. It'd be unique because we have multiple diverse communities. And each of them has their own challenges.
So what else would we update or change on this?
So I would say that, um, uh, take out, well, you can add term. Oh, documentation of SIS usability and family engagement assessment. Just changing one word, data.
Where?
From data to assessment.
Where?
The vast evidence.
So say it again.
It says documentation on SIS usability and family engagement assessment. It means that those are two different things though. It means you're, you're gonna look at the SIS. What you were talking about a while ago, how were they, how were they communicating? Cause I don't have a kid in school, so I don't know, neither do I.
So they use it synergy, so they use it to check grades.
Who does?
Parents and students.
And parents, parents and students have access to that.
Exactly, see that's, that's documentation of SIS usability, that's that. And then family engagement assessment, which is different. It's actually SIS usability is part of family assessment, engagement assessment.
So do we want for the first one? Cause the first one said before, before I changed it and I have to go back.
Parent engagement events, record.
In, uh, parent engagement event records with subgroup participation rates. I changed it to say, assess parent engagement, involvement, event records with subgroup participation rates. Do we wanna leave it as it was originally because we added and family engagement to the third evidence?
I think we need to have four, not four, then we gotta eliminate something. I think that, uh, assessment of, of parental engagement is so important that you've got to see that that could be the foundational piece from which everything else goes. Cause once you find out the extent to which they are participating, you then know which parents are participating, which ones are not. And you can then target your, uh, your, your strategies towards those who are, who are participating. And it's, it's exciting that there is technology available for the parents to participate. So long as they follow through, what if they participate but nothing happens? That's the other part, is that, um, is that the technology may be a useful tool, but it still isn't leading, is a chance leading to, um, improvement, so then that means there's something else going on. But at least it's, it's, it's a, uh, it's a great, uh, beginning technological, um, tool that I never had experiences.
So key evidence, assess parental engagement.
Every nine weeks.
Assess parental engagement, involvement and event records with subgroup participation rate.
Yes.
Tribal parent advisory council minutes and agendas, shouldn't it be?
I don't know who the advisory council is, I never heard of that.
Isn't that, isn't that, but isn't that right, isn't that an ATP?
It's just an Eric term.
Much well. We had equity.
Yeah, but let's not do that. What is tribal parent advisory council minute? What is that?
Guess that's IPAC.
So is that what we want to change it to? That's what, that's what I think it is, but.
You could ask at least slides of the end there.
Yeah.
So that's.
Document to hold up the value.
Or you could, you can do any, um, your success meetings.
Student success meetings.
You can include that as part of a discussion.
That's usually with the.
It's a tradition. It's travel records, so, uh, you can say, uh, travel advisory.
Tribal parent advisory council minutes and then I put parentheses IPAC and student success meeting.
What's like, et cetera, so that we use some, so that you know, then, then you like it.
Kay Lane, can you read up what's on the screen for those? Key evidence. Assess parental engagement, involvement and event records with subgroup, subgroup participation rates. Then tribal parent advisory council minutes, parentheses IPAC and student success meetings, comma, et cetera. Documentation on cis usability and family engagement assessment.
Uh, I would change council to group. Cause everybody asks the question, what is council, right, you say group, it's anything.
True.
And then with the, the last one, documentation on SSI.
That where I highlighted, you want that to say group?
Yeah. Because we don't have councils, we have.
Well, we have the Indian parent advisory council, that's what IPAC is, right?
Committee.
Oh, committee.
Committee.
Committee, thank you, that's my fault for thinking it was council.
Yeah.
That was my fault, it's okay.
That's where.
Okay, so we changed group now.
Yeah, instead of the committee would work, yeah, or but group minutes could be that, that.
That's good, and then what else, sir?
Is there any other technology that has been used to engage the parents?
Facebook.
Facebook.
Well.
The, the district website.
We have the district social medias.
And each high school has their own or a school.
Well, and like, ele- like, elementaries.
Okay, then, documentation on SIS, SIS, usability and other technology.
Yeah, yeah, cause like elementaries, they do, they have apps where, you know, if your child's not behaving, I can send you a notification right away.
There, see?
Oh.
We're trying to just document every way possible that it's meaningful interaction with the, with parents.
Yeah.
Or, or if they fall, or they go to the, or if they, if they go to the nurse.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that we're good on that one, correct?
Yes.
Organizational management indicator six point one demonstrates budget management, including financial forecasting, planning and budget development. Key evidence, budget calendar documentation and budget books. Audit reports with findings and responses, finance subcommittee agendas. The rubric includes rating of one, no documented budget process. Two would get you basic budget documentation with weak forecasting. A three would mean budget documentation complete, some alignment with goals. A four would be strong documentation of forecasting compliance and equity focus and five would be transparent documentation, budget tied directly to equity and strategic needs. Why, let me just ask this, and please, all of you, educate me. Why do we have equity focus as part of the budget? And I understand that there, we receive, you know, federal funding, we receive impact aid and things like that, however, wouldn't equity focus, strong equity focus? I mean, uh, that, that should go without saying.
Where is that at?
And.
The Rubus Cube?
Yeah.
Oh, just down there.
Yeah.
It's not up here in the.
I mean, just explain to me, I, I need that.
It should, but if we put a whole bunch of money into athletics at Grant's High School. Didn't necessarily do that at Laguna Akama. That would not be equitable, um, and I think you know, are there more kids here, you know, you, you, you have to, you have to look at equity. And, and, or if or if we did something for Cabaro and didn't do it for Subway, you, you know, I, I think.
Okay, no, I just.
You have to consider.
Up to.
And equal between all schools.
I, I just needed you to, to clarify some of that.
Not necessarily equally, but, but.
Yeah. The Yasi Martinez is all about the unsatisfactory, um, results and that the, that the state has not been providing the necessary resources for the students who are at, who have been bound to be at risk. And those at risk populations were Native Americans, students with disabilities, English learners and economically disadvantaged. And the reason why economically disadvantaged is because that is a substantial portion of ours, of our populace, no matter what ethnicity.
Absolutely.
No matter what community.
Absolutely.
And so the state says, you've got to pay attention to whether the parents have the resources in order to provide quality family life.
Yeah.
And so you're gonna have to help out schools.
Yeah.
And you may need to put some extra money into those things that are gonna help those parents up to supplement and provide enriching experiences for the kids. You're allocating resources on the basis of, of need, student needs rather than distributing them evenly across all, all programs. That helps you reduce the gas. So if you, if you design a program for one school and you don't provide it for another one that has a greater need, then we need to ask the, the superintendent, um.
Why?
Why? And he needs to explain, and so what we need to do is to say, okay, let's, let's build a budget and have you explain to us how we're allocating those things. The problem is, is that the state drives the budget development by its SEG. And so you then are prone to say, count the number. And so you then are prone to say, count the number of kids you got, and that's how much money you're gonna get. So there's a, there's a, uh, conflict. That, um, happens, that, uh, leadership, um, concern is how do we do that at the same time addressing needs? How to provide additional resources to those students who have greater needs? In our school district, we have a, a significant percentage of our students who have, who have academic needs. So we have to figure out how do you provide the additional resources for them? That's what equity budgeting is all about. So we have to collectively understand what that means. Not only amongst ourselves as a board. But, uh, but administration, staff, teachers.
Sure, it's a fantastic.
They need extra tutors. What at one school is doing real well, but another school isn't doing well, and so the other school gets tutors and the other one says, how come we don't get tutors? Well, we have to make decisions as to where the need is to the extent possible.
Well, and that goes to indicator six point two.
Yeah.
I mean, what you're saying right, right there.
Right there.
Indicator six point two aligns resources with school district goals. And promotes equitable allocation of all available resources. So with that being said. What, what on six point one demonstrating budget management, including financial forecasting, planning. And budget development. Mr. Wyder, we've asked you on all of these, you know, four and five. What, what do you have there? You know, what do you see? How can you attain that? So it would be strong documentation of forecasting, compliance and equity focus. And a five would be transparent documentation, budget tied directly to equity and strategic need. So that's about the six point one.
What I can see is where you seek support from N M S B A, from the superintendent's group. And saying, I think we superintendents need more training in equity budgeting. How do you do that? And so.
Well, and I think that's where we bring in. Consultants to advise us on. We have that we could.
Keep talking about both of those. I've kind of.
Well, like you said, then you might need another aide at this school. Yeah, like that.
Yeah.
If, if, or she might need another aide cuz she's.
They might need a literacy program at face of you.
And want to go over there. Right? And so. But it has to be based upon, uh, the data and the principals who will be the ones who advise him, uh, on based upon our needs. And they look at their dash plans or whatever it is that we have at the beginning of next spring. This is where we're gonna need to put some more money. But it all depends on what happens in, uh, March and April when they give you the S E G.
Yeah.
What is that? That's where. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. That's where they tell you the unit value. How much your kids are worth.
Oh, that's the state equalization.
Okay.
Money.
Oh, they say equalization, but it's.
Well, access or S E G, and I've heard that before.
We've heard it all the time and it, it's still, it's still sometimes hard to understand because they change the formulas, uh, almost every year. And so we, we're, you know, we probably understood it, then the next.
Probably filled out that's according to.
Yes. Uh, every, every year, there's a single sheet. It's, it's two sheets. And it takes all the kids, puts them into, into their categories of need. And then, and at the end, you get a, you get your, your complete, uh, sterilization guarantee. And, uh, and that's when they start building the budget. It sounds like it's very tech, technical and artificial, but it shouldn't be. What we're saying here is that we need to ensure that the budget is going to, that when we budget things, when we budget staff, and most of it is, is staff. How do we, how do we, uh, uh. Respond to the, to the additional needs that, that we have. In our situation, our need is pervasive. That means just throughout every school. So when we have, uh, when we look at our data. We see that, um, like in almost all, all of our schools are at risk groups are not doing as well as they should. We are making growth gains. Uh, but we, we need to continue to keep that going and increase it even further. That's where the dash plans come into play because the dash plans need to influence how we make decisions about the. But the best, so you need to know how, what progress we're making on, on the, on the school improvement plans this year. So that we'll know whether or not we need to respond to a school's extra needs that they may have. But that's what it is. It's targeted support. Based upon the data. And so. It's one of those tough ones.
Yeah.
That's where, it's like in your family. Say you got seven kids in the family. And, um. And some of them are having greater needs. And so everybody wants to get new shoes. So you have to decide, well, can I afford to get new shoes?
These shoes are still good.
And, and three hundred points.
But what about the shoes that are still good?
Yeah, and then you may have to say, you may have to say, you're. One of your kids may.
But you have to do that, though, and even at home, like you said.
Yeah. Or if one of the students had, one of your children have greater needs this year. You may have to say, we're gonna have to give some more money to, we're gonna have to provide some, uh, some tutoring health benefits. Or, you know, some medical needs. And we may have to put more money in there and you can't, you can't give everybody the same.
You know, work on their teeth, they need braces, you know?
Yeah.
Same with the schools.
So it's.
He's a little teacher.
There are different. We've been bad with this, our schools were more.
That's, what did we come up with?
We're finished.
Good.
Seven, one and two. Beautiful. We're ready to vote. Let's do it. Here we go. I'll call.
We're even have to vote on this one.
Yes, we do.
We're voting on the timeline.
No, we're voting on the instrument, not the timeline.
What is the action item, say?
Action item. The action item is consideration of a, of the superintendent formative evaluation instrument. It's the instrument. Because we discuss the timeline and lay out the timeline. The fact one did not necessitate a vote. This does.
Get this done, that'll be done.
Okay, yeah. So we liked six one. Were there any changes to six one? No, there were not, right? Which, six to two, you all were talking about aligning and allocating when I walked back in. So six two. Were there any changes on that?
That would be.
The budget allocation map to strategic plan, evidence of funding. Directed to at-risk groups, evidence of cash flow management. Did you just discuss that?
We did, so.
You did?
We were still on six one.
Okay, so six one is good. I've heard that now twice. So six two. I'll just read it quickly. Alignes resources with school district goals and promotes equitable allocation of available resources. Key evidence, budget allocations mapped to strategic plan. Evidence of funding directed to at-risk subgroups, evidence of cash flow management. So a one would be resources misaligned, no documentation. A two rating would be limited documentation, partial alignment, equity overlooked. Three would mean there's clear alignment documented and partial equity addressed. A four would be strong documented alignment with equity focus and tribal input considered. And five would be comprehensive transparent documentation of equitable allocations and monitoring. I like it.
Then you get three easily.
I would think. You wanna shoot for the five, right? Because you wanna be parent, you want, we, just like. We have our auditors here now because we're doing a really in-depth audit.
I don't.
I also like four because it says that you should consider your stakeholders, right? So.
It's a little curious.
I, I think it's.
So you think you've got evidence of everything now?
I got it. I did threes really. I mean, we see five all the time.
We're good. We're moving on. We liked this one. We liked pick two. Any input from you on that one, sir?
I think it's too summative. Not informative. The budgeting with the government doing cuts? You seen any cuts?
Also. We haven't in.
Just the initial.
About food. We haven't in New Mexico.
I just thought about food or even shots.
Tariffs are impacting us, though.
Oh, we both have to.
We, we, at our next meeting, you guys will have a bid for Chromebooks. We don't get as many Chromebooks because of the tariffs now.
The indicator says six, and six point two says. You are to align resources. With school district goals. And you're to promote equitable allocation at available resources. I put it in that, in that context to have you understand. What we're asking you to do between now and, uh, and October. So if we're to approve this tonight and then we complete it next, in October. You will have to provide it as evidence that you've done that. Can you do that in two weeks?
Probably, probably based on the staffing and the one-to-one and then, you know, the.
And the budget that you submitted last year.
Well. You have to explain to us. Two things. One is the alignment of the resources with the goals. And two, you have to. Show us how it has been equitably allocated.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the harder. You have to figure out what this.
Oh, and that would even go to system's fights.
Like your time brother.
Chromebooks.
You know.
Good all of that.
The needs.
Would that be, guy?
You can only afford.
Would that be?
To the tariffs.
Like what we saw in May. How each school site has. What its budget is. The unit value for the different school sites. Like if you're, if you're looking at. You know, what we all saw. We know that a couple of the smaller schools. You know, they might be nineteen thousand. Per student to operate, where some of the larger schools are, you know, eleven thousand, if I'm remembering correctly.
More expensive.
So, so that, that to me. That to me, that evidence would be showing, you know, the equity. And the allocation across all the different school sites. What, what more are you thinking?
Well.
There, hold on. What more are you thinking would need to be showing? You know, as far as, cuz this is aligning resources with district goals. And is promoting equitable allocation of available resources. I mean, that, that alone right there, what we saw, you know, we know. What Mr. Wyder just said, it's a lot more expensive for the smaller school.
And the Chromebooks are.
It's not to be, I'm not to be convinced. I mean, it's not a matter of me being convinced. It's a matter of me, um. See the thing for myself. Whether or not it meets the definition of equity budgeting. And so. He needs to convey to us that there was equity in budgeting. That doesn't mean, uh, when you, when you distribute the money evenly across all schools. It means where you, where you allocate resources based upon student need. Allocate resources based upon student need. So how does that information that you're talking about? Demonstrate that he allocated resource based upon student need. The, um. One way is, is to, is to show how you prioritize, um. Programs, interventions, staff to help reduce. Uh, help to help reduce gaps in achievement. So if you, if you have, if you have developed programs that are being implemented now. They're addressing the reduction of achievement gaps. That's the way to do that. So every school must have. Um, programs and interventions that use money that help reduce achievement gap. So that's, that's a beginning of how to do that. Many schools are challenged in trying to do equity budget. Because of the nature of which how the state. Creates their, the formula-based allocation for schools. That S E G are just saying. And so it. We, we feel strongly that we were supposed to, were compelled to provide. If a school has two hundred kids. And allocation is, is a thousand. Then you multiply that. And you do it through the next school. Whatever the formula is, you apply it each one. That then tells you, then you also need to know how many grade, grades you have in that school. In a high school, you then determine how many, um, courses you're going to teach, how many teachers you need to have. Whatever the credits required, then you do that. So we, we have those, those longstanding structures that make us do that. But what the state, what the Yasi Martinez is saying, that isn't cutting it. You're not achieving, you're not reducing the achievement gap. By doing it the way the state is saying.
Well, what they're doing is they're saying, they're giving the, uh, same amount of dollars for each, let's say we're students. They're giving ten dollars, ten dollars, ten dollars, ten dollars.
Exactly.
But I really need twenty dollars because I need an extra reading teacher.
Exactly. So what he has to do is to brainstorm, think through how, how can I best show that? As a preliminary effort for next spring. So when we start building the budget, we start to think in that mindset. So we always say, when we're building the budget now, going to what we're hearing is that. How, how are you allocating the funds to address the needs of, of the kids in these different schools? And what we will say is that the, the need is great in all schools. We just need to figure out how we allocate the resources in that school. Uh, and it, it, and that's what it needs to do. It needs to identify the programs and the interventions, additional staff. Or tools that are used to reduce the gaps in achievement. Is the, is the addition of. Of Chromebooks. A solution. An intervention for reducing the achievement gap. How many adverse populations? Native Americans, students with disabilities. English learners and. Economically disadvantaged. That is, we are a, we are a school that qualifies for all of the world.
Okay, so all of that, let's go back to our six point two. Alignes resources with school district goals and promotes equitable allocation of available resources. Key evidence. Budget allocations now to align with the strategic plan. Evidence of funding directed to at-risk groups, evidence of cash flow management.
And I'm just saying, all of that was basically to apprise him of, of, of how that, that's, that could be done. Saying that. We need to identify how we is funded, uh, additional programs. Intervention to staff. And I can write that down and send it to him tomorrow.
That'd be great. I think that would be very helpful to you, correct?
And then.
Okay.
There'd be a building, so you can leave it as it is.
Great.
Yeah, that's good.
So that was six two. Excellent. Hey, we're making progress. We've got one section left.
Two more.
Well. No, one, just the, the last. Yeah, the, the professional standards of conduct.
Two more indicators.
Two indicators. Yes, sir.
But it's only seven.
So professional standards of conduct, indicators. So professional standards of conduct, indicator one. Facilitates a high standard. Of professional and respectful behavior in all workplace interaction. Staff and leader, so here, here's our key evidence. Staff and leadership meeting records documenting discussions and resolutions supporting professional conduct. Staffing updates and position alignment records showing clear roles. Responsibilities and equitable assignments. Workplace policy documentation with staff acknowledgement. Demonstrating proactive management of professional behavior. So again, some of this kind of aligns with. That earlier. Communication stuff.
Yeah.
So. Uh. The rubric, the ratings, one would be. Documentation shows unprofessional slash disrespectful behavior. Two, uh, two would be records showing inconsistent conduct. Policies not reinforced, three would be. Documentation shows generally professional behavior and compliance. Four would be consistent documentation of professional culture. And respectful practices and five would be comprehensive. Documentation showing district-wide respectful culture with equity embedded. I think the big. I mean, the big thing here, again. The four and the five. A- as far as, you know, the evidence goes, Mr. Wyder. Facilitating a high standard of professional respectful behavior in all working interactions. You know, what, what do you have for staff leadership meetings, records documenting discussion? Staffing updates, position alignment, clear roles. Workplace policies. Demonstrating proactive management.
Well, and this would be. Today I was at three sites. I met with. Especially a team of decent view, I met with. Administrative team at Mount Taylor. I met with. G H S admin and technology. Usually agendas for that, for those meetings.
And the professional side. Culture, district-wide respectful culture with equity embedded. Cause I think that's what. We would need to really look at and, and see. I mean, I think we sitting here see. You be professional. You know, every time we're in the meeting. Even when it's a, you know, twenty-four hour meeting.
Just documentation, meeting, the agendas, the Firefly notes.
I mean, I think this is a thing we were talking about, some of that. Some things going.
They open up.
Overlapping, you know, your newsletter.
It's interesting too, because I try to. When I'm. I try to go to the sites more than making people come here. There's that, you know, you're in trouble, you're at the pencils off. So. So I try, Dr. Guy is.
Or would you drive them?
Dr. Guy has pointed out, you know, you have to, you have to be cognizant of your physician.
Yeah.
And so. I. I want people to feel comfortable with the. Walking into their classroom, not necessarily their.
Freaking out.
Right, I'm just. Not necessarily saying we need to come to the superintendent's office. For me, so.
I mean, are there, are there? Surveys that you do, I mean, we were talking earlier about needs assessment for parents and. Parent engagement. Maybe there would need to be, you know, some. Surveying done, you know, about. How people feel at their school sites, how. You know, people feel at the district level versus at the custodial level. But the professionalism is, is what's gonna bring it all together.
Monthly, monthly survey.
Okay.
The August survey was not. Real successful because I did it kind of as an open spreadsheet. Where if. Walter had an issue.
Everybody could see the.
He's a third grade teacher. His principal could see Walter, but. So I didn't get a lot of feedback, um.
Understandably so.
I did an anonymous survey this in September and. I got fifty. Fifty.
Responses.
People responded.
Do they participate in it? Or some.
Well, we have five hundred employees, so ten percent, but. But some people don't.
Better than zero percent.
An anonymous, I mean, anonymous means if you probably get more, more people participate if it's anonymous, hey, you know, here's an anonymous, just fill it out.
Alright, I'm waiting for the. Made a breath for you on this one, sir.
Uh, puzzled, how it's gonna do that?
I, I agree, which is.
Because it's this document. So if I was to give you a live, I need to have documents, I can't have you tell me, I have to. You have to show me. And that means uh show. How the document of, um, reflects a respectful culture. And um. It actually says with equity embedded. And that one's a tricky one. Because you have to then determine what does equity embedded mean? I would take off the, the term equity embedded until I figure out what it means.
Okay, we can do that.
And um. Well, wait a minute, we have equitable assignments. Staffing updates and position alignment records showing clear roles, responsibility. Equitable assignment, I guess that means like a. Uh, fair that we've been in, in distributing the resources. Of staff to the different schools. It's like if you have. At teacher aids. And one school has ten teacher aids. And another school has three teacher aids. Then that would, that would cause some of. Cultural disturbance in that school that only has you. So equitable assignments means how, how fairly are you distributing the. Staffs, the resources. Based upon the needs of that school. And so. You have to do staffing updates and position alignment. Records showing clear roles, responsibilities. Equitable assignments. So. That, that puts, that puts um. A burden upon the principal. Or the administrator, whether it may be. And H R, we're trying to make sure we've got those nailed down. And so clear roles and responsibilities. And are we, are we signing in a fair way? That resource to the different departments?
Well, we could look at your evidence, I, I think your suggested evidence, number one. Would be what we were just talking about, staff surveys on workplace climate. You know, if you're looking at, at guys. Guys document. Suggested evidence could be staff surveys on workplace climate.
Have that.
You know, documentation of superintendent's behavior, feedback logs, I don't know how you do that. Records of conflict resolution practices. I think that would be more.
I have some of that.
Systems and.
I don't know that.
You can't share.
That's personnel stuff.
Yeah, you can't share that with us. Public communication modeling, respect. I don't know what public communication there is, though. I mean, your newsletter.
Yeah.
Equity inclusion training.
You facilitate. That means you. Facilitate, you lead, you show. High standard of professional respectful behavior. In all workplace interaction. You do, uh, so. You can do number two. That's what you've been doing. What is it that you're doing, you can document your. Your engagements on site.
Yeah, I mean, I have meeting agendas.
Well. It's interactions and feedback. You may need to.
Hold on, if he, are you asking? I'm going for clarification here. Are you asking? When you're saying documentation. And feedback. Documentation of meetings that he's having. And feedback, how is he getting feedback? And what, I, again, I, I think that we have to tread very carefully about not. Getting too. Much back from personnel.
No.
You know?
What, well, this would fall in there too, it would piggyback.
Well, that does, yeah.
Into, into that one also.
So clarification, sir.
The. This is for your behavior. In part. Is how do you demonstrate? This professional respectful behavior in all. Settings, the school system. So how do you do that? Why is, why is that important for the, for the board to know? Are there occasions when superintendents are less than um courteous?
Not, not this one.
You know, or, you know.
Not this one.
And so there are instances. So what we're saying is that in this, this is that we expect you to. And you go back to your, to I think the code of conduct step. I think that's where this all comes from, is that. It's your ethical conduct. Has to be impeccable throughout the. Throughout the district. And um. And how do you demonstrate that? You don't demonstrate that just by walking around and smiling and saying how are you doing? It means that you go over there, you must have a purpose for going to a site. And what is the purpose? And they know what the purpose is, the purpose for you to visit is. To, to go to the schools is, is intentional. And has a function. It enables you to become aware of what is of, of the. Of the uh instruction that is going on. Is there any, any oddities, any, anything that is? Question, or you can have a specific agenda every time you go. Which is, which is also a, a demonstration of. Of, of professional behavior, you come not just to socialize, you come for a purpose. You come because your presence there means that something is important.
Right.
And so you can have an agenda. You can say, I want to meet with. With the E L Cs, or I want to meet with the principal and the counselor. Or I want to meet with first grade teachers. There is, and for what purpose? And much, much of it has to do with curriculum and instruction. Is to what extent are you going out there to get us, get a um. A, a. Strategic sense of, of the, of the effectiveness of professional development. Of what the uh, what the staff are doing. And you do it in a, in a respectful way, so they recognize that um. That you are there just not just to be visible like politician. But you're there because. You want to see what you guys have provided in professional development. At least got to be manifested in the classroom instruction. And so that could mean where you will tell the principals every week. Or you will tell them that when I come, there's, there's some things that I'd like to. Be consistent about. And so then they would say, then you would say to them, what do you suggest that you would want me to see? So then it becomes intentional. And they know that it's a, it is a very professional. In um, visit. And um. And so when I see that. Conflict resolution means there are issues that are occurring, but that one I would. Probably not put in there for at this time. Just we don't know how, how to interpret that. Examples of public communications, modeling, respect. You're modeling respect, basically. So I think you, you. What I hear is that you, you seek to do that continuously. So that's. We go back to yours, where's yours?
So it was staff leadership is meeting records documenting discussions of resolutions. Supporting professional conduct to what Guy was just saying, your principal meetings. You know, I'm sure your principal meetings, not everything is smooth, right? Cause I'm sure you're talking about problems at sites and. You know, how things could be resolved. Et cetera, right, I think that would be. How staff and leadership meeting records documenting discussions and resolutions. I think that would. Fall in line with what you could provide us. Staffing updates and position alignment records showing clear roles, responsibilities. And equitable assignments. I mean, that's. Already this year, you've given us two staffing updates, including one, you know, this morning. Position alignment records showing clear.
This morning.
In that, you know.
Well, I mean, look at that.
And then workplace. Right, I think we didn't change. Work, workplace policy documentation with staff acknowledgement demonstrating proactive management of professional behavior. I mean, I.
Well, I didn't get that there, but like I pretty much did, I think this is the rest of this stuff.
Anyway.
I think that looks like a. I guess I'm having difficulty with them. And, and this one has always been one that's, it's two, it's um.
Very subjective.
It's not explicit behavior. Professional instructional behavior, leadership behavior, like budgeting, stuff like.
Well, it's not as measurable.
It's a softer kind of um.
Yeah, it's not as measurable.
And so it's tough to measure um perceptions.
Yep.
And um.
Maybe this could be.
And you can't major staff. I think that you could do staff surveys on workplace climate.
Yeah.
Um, so that would fall under, could, could that um? So number three on my, just because it's on the screen. Workplace policy documenting, documentation with staff acknowledgement. Couldn't we say workplace? Documentation with staff surveys?
They could say assess workplace climate through staff assessment. Okay, uh, that's the. Assess workplace climate through. Informal and formal surveys. Slash, parentheses confidential. As you said, you only got the dimes worth. Only got fifty cents worth.
Yeah.
Right.
So like assess workplace climate through. Down. Survey. How do you wanna say it, sir?
Well, I could share that data too.
Can't see it.
I know. I know, let me zoom it. Assess workplace climate through staff surveys.
Informal, informal service.
Employee feedback.
And, and, yeah.
Through informal. Through informal.
Formal, or informal. Or, or, or informal.
Through informal or informal, through informal or formal staff surveys.
That, that basically begins. And develop strategies. To improve. Develop strategies to improve. Workplace.
Goodness.
That gives you a chance to get some input and then work on what it is that needs to be done, whatever it comes up. And then develop some approaches.
To improve slash address workplace club. Do you see that on the screen, sir?
Yes, sir.
Assess workplace climate through informal or formal staff surveys. Confidentiality in place and develop strategies to improve slash address workplace climate. Sir.
Yes, that.
That kind of.
That gets you to number four.
Yeah.
On your rating. Says documentation of professional culture. So that's the purpose of doing this too, is you want to be able to, of course, to instill a professional culture for yourself and also for the staff. For the principals. So you have to keep in mind that it's necessarily just for you, it's for the principals.
And the teacher.
Mister, um, one of the former superintendents used to have a survey, I don't know whether it's still done. Uh, of, surveying the, having the teachers fill out a confidential survey of principal, which is fun.
Well, the state used to do it.
Yeah, it was required, so I don't know how, but but it was so touching. Because you if you have a small school, it's sixty.
Yeah. All right, so I think that we are in agreement on seven.
Seven two.
Seven two. Promote staff compliance and conduct standards in classrooms and departments throughout the school district. Including consistent evaluation and discipline standards across the district. Key evidence. Documentation of implementation, records of policies, code of conduct, and guidelines communicated to staff with acknowledgement of receipt. Consistency and evaluation, evidence of equitable and standardized staff evaluations across schools and departments, that's what Guy was just talking about. Professional development and support. Records of training, coaching, or workshops provided to staff that reinforce conduct standard, standards, and professional expectations. So again, the rubric with the ratings would be one, no documented compliance or evaluation standards. Two would be limited or inconsistent documentation of compliance. A three would be documentation showing standards in place with some equity monitoring. Four would be consistent documentation of fair compliance across the subgroups. And five would be comprehensive documentation of district-wide compliance culture with equity and accountability. Board members, Mr. Weidner.
I think this one would be all of the system work that the mentor group has been helping with. Because it's, it's a group of stakeholders. And so, you know, when we're writing the field trip policies, it's not just Edwina, it's the athletic directors and stuff. And so you have, you have your stakeholder subgroups coming in. It's a pretty fair profit, equitable process. I, I would think that that would be a whole lot that could be, and, and then that's turned into Amanda coming in and updating our policies to make sure that our policies and our procedures are aligned and so I think that would be a lot of documentation.
Wrong. Anything on that, anything on that one, sir?
Yes.
No, it's her.
Yes.
Very, very close. I'm, I'm gonna, I, I was leaving Guy for, for last and his thoughts on this one.
We should.
I, I think it's, yeah, I think, I think this one.
Your next board comes in and changes it.
Aligns with everything you just said, that we're, we as a district.
This one will last. Yeah, this should last, it's all of us.
Four or five years.
Really, no, you wish to, I like it.
Guy's pondering, I'm watching him tapping away. We're, we're getting closer.
Well, this one has been. ABS has run into this and some other school districts have run into this issue. And so.
On your thoughts?
And it's important for us to understand what's policies, policies. The systems and procedures. Of.
Of dignity.
There are two documents that are, that, that must be signed up. The teacher handbook. And the student parent handbook. That's what this is about. It's the code of conduct, the responsibilities. Then with respect to student, conduct discipline, we must be consistent and fair in how we handle this. Handle any, any instance of discipline. The standards must be consistent and uniform. Particularly for those students who have, who have a who have an IP, for instance, if you have IP, then you have to realize that of state level regulations come into play when it, when it, when it comes to addressing discipline issues for those students, so you have to ensure you you can see yourself into a lot of trouble and expense if you, if you there's a misstep with respect to how you administer discipline for students. And we have hearing officers and stuff like that. So there's a whole structure and process that is involved with, with discipline, this is what this is referring to, is that been, and, and decades ago, this used to have to do with racial discrimination in schools. And even, even, maybe not that far back, but you have to ensure that, that the teachers follow their ethical codes and the, our policies, our policies are already stated like this. So you would, you would have to refer back to your, to district policies about, about discipline. And that's what you would do, is that you would need to document, says records of policies, codes of conduct, and, and so you can do the first one really quickly. Consistent evaluation evidence of equitable and standardized staff evaluations across schools and departments. That involves both you and principals. To what extent are you following the, the, the guidelines of the state respect to evaluating uh, staff and teachers? How do you demonstrate you're doing that? The one that we can also document is professional development. To what extent are we providing the necessary professional development support that is going to address the needs of the kids in our schools? And, and reflect, and reflect our direction we're taking. When we build our strategic plan, we'll have specific goals that we want to ensure that our, that our that our professional development is supporting. So I'm just stating those things because it's, it's, okay, let's stretch what we say there, it's, it's, it's good evidence. So what are you going to show us? You can show us this. You can show us the documentation about policies, codes of conduct, conduct guidelines. You can show us the, the plans for evaluating teachers, what is the, or principals, teachers, what is the plan, what is the state say? Are we adhering to the timeline set, set forth? Uh, and then you've, you've got a plan for professional development that you can provide to us. We're done. Well, we had an issue with, you know, the, you know, different schools have different disciplinary procedures. You know, eventually, I guess you, you wanted to have like what.
You want to be, yeah, you, you want to. That's why I was talking about the student handbook. It, it needs to be a district's student handbook, that way every, every school's on the same.
Employee template, you know.
All right, so I, anything you wanted to add? Anything else to that? I believe that we're, we are done with that now, Mr. Weidner. Thank you, board members, this was a very good back and forth conversation to get us done with this and, and know that not only for October, but March. We have a good working document that we all talked about how we can score and gave you a lot of really good suggestions on how to get those scores and the files. Thank you, board members, I like that a lot. Next, we've got to talk about our timeline. In, in this evaluations. Mr. Weidner, you created a, a proposed timeline, if I can find it in here.
Right there.
Was it in? Perfect. I was going way even that.
I know, I didn't know what.
You did perfect. You, Walter, Walter studied his book way more than I studied mine. I knew it was in here. So timeline. You indicated, you know, the, the format evaluation. Our goal is to be done within October. Board members. Mr. Weidner gave us a monthly evaluation workflow. Uh, he talked about distribution of the evaluation tool, that's what we're gonna vote on and hopefully approve momentarily here. Also providing us with all of the evidence, the shared drive, et cetera. Uh, board members, I'd like to know your feedback on completing this. Uh, Mr. Weidner did create versions of this where uh, we have, like what is on the screen? Uh, where you have your rating? That you could easily circle and, you know, print the document, circle and, and do a hard copy. But I know that he also created for us the ability to click and do the scoring that way.
You still writing comments?
Yes.
And then, yes, there's, there is room for comments, not on my document. My document is different than the one Mr. Weidner, um, completed. But after this evening, he can take this that we all hopefully will be approving again momentarily and put it into the format where it's automatic for everybody to be able to do, and then comments can be added in right immediately, right there.
Yeah.
So board members, I think right now what we need to talk about is this timeline. Ideally, we know that this has been coming. We approved, you know, the, the actual formative indicators, now we have worked on the scoring so that we all are on literally the same page with how to score the evidence that we're given. Because it gives us, you know, exactly what is on, on there as far as what's a one, what's two, what's a three, et cetera.
And we do.
That being, yeah, that being said. Our first meeting is next week, next Tuesday. If we feel that we need to have an executive session at that meeting to discuss this. We as the board can discuss this. You know, and we don't have to have a superintendent there necessarily. But we need to talk next steps. The goal is to be able to present him this information in October. So that he then has November, December, January, and February, four months before the next formative, which begins in March. Again, that should take that month, so. Mr. Weidner. You wrote here in your proposed timeline, distribution, evidence. The tools for evaluation, the shared drive and evaluation process will be prepared prior to the first meeting of the month. So that board members are prepared to discuss and to meet in the meeting, hence the, if we need executive session, we can do that. Following the first regular board meeting of the month. In which an evaluation is scheduled, board members will meet in executive session to discuss their evaluation process. Completion of evaluation feedback. Board members will complete their data entry during the time period between the first and second meetings of the month, giving us two weeks. They will prepare, prepare to provide individual feedback to the superintendent at the second regular board meeting of the month. Following the second meeting of the month, board will meet in an executive session to provide verbal feedback to the superintendent. The superintendent did ask earlier if we as a board would like him to give us a presentation of his documentation or anything else that we need. I, I personally feel that the evidence, you know, speaks for itself. But that's me. I would like everybody else to weigh in on whether they feel that he needs to give us a presentation of his documentation and evidence.
Or this one on one.
I.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it can be anything that the board suggests.
Drive by the end of this week. Then, if you had any questions.
We have the first meeting executive as a group, but if individually. Wrong? Guy. We're, we're so close, sir.
Have to rethink what I was. I'm always looking for gaps. Issue number one, today is Monday. That means we have to it's kind of a false. That means that between now and Tuesday we would have completed the.
No, 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 sir.
No, you don't have to do it yet.
No, sir.
We just, we just wanted to finalize it and, and make sure we had it in place. And so.
Give it to you by the end of this week.
And I will now have. Essentially, we have eight days, right? But our, our meeting is on the seventh, so, so Chenda and I will get the drive ready, prepared.
By Friday.
And we'll have it by Friday, because that's when we have to post the agenda. So I think. So I think. It's up to you guys. I have presentations too. Um, I can do a presentation on how Isaac could come and help me do a presentation on how to use the drive.
I'm looking at distribution and evaluation tools. That's where you say, okay, following the first regular board meeting of the month, which. Following the first regular board meeting of the month in which an evaluation is scheduled. Board members will meet in executive session. So that means in the second board meeting, we will meet in executive session to discuss the. Evaluation, is that correct?
No, it would be the first one.
So what, what does that, following the first board meeting?
Right, I think that that was a typo.
Then that go back to the same thing then. Means that next, by next Tuesday, we actually completed the.
Right, but if you read, okay. So Mr. Widener and I talked about this. I think that. There was a little, it was lost in translation because I know you. And I. Had the, the timeline. Lined up. So it would be, number one. Would be. Prior to the first meeting, you would give. The instrument. So basically, essentially, we're saying Friday. You would give us the instrument, you would, the drive. The evidence. Everything that you possibly can. Before the first meeting. So all of the evidence and the instrument. We would theoretically. Have. Before the first, before the first meeting. Of the month. At the first meeting of the month, and I, I agree, and I think this. Got a little confused. At the first meeting. If need be. We would. Solidify the timeline. I think that the timeline, Mr. Widener, should happen at the last meeting. Before the evaluation process. So technically, this meeting. Right?
Right.
So, but it. In March. We would have this discussion at the second February meeting.
Right.
Because we would want to outline. What that timeline is for the evaluation. Which is kind of what we're doing right now. Okay, so guy. I know he has that written down that way. Let's, let's simplify. So number one would be. Friday before the first meeting. We would have. The first meeting, yes. Correct, Walter.
And then when you guys.
So Friday would be the instrument, right? And the drive. With evidence. Right? We're in agreement on. Friday being the, the drive. And the instrument. So part two of that would be. Guy, at the first meeting of the month. I, I got one too. Thank you, sir. So. The first meeting. Would. Technically be. The executive session. Where we are prepared. To discuss. The evaluation. If there was going to be a presentation by you, it would happen in the executive session. Any questions with the drive, with the evidence? Et cetera. That would be happening at the first executive session.
Right.
Does that make sense? Okay, so following. The first regular board meeting. Following it. That would be the completion. Of the instrument by the board. So number three would technically be. Between meetings. First, between the first and second meeting. Complete. The instrument. Okay, so in executive at the first meeting, it would be any presentation. It would be any questions about evidence. And. Anything else that the board needed to know for me. Between the first and second meeting. Would be our responsibility. That gives us two weeks. After your presentation. After executive session to complete. The instrument.
Put it down.
I am, I'm writing it down. I will. Oh, you want to see it right now? Chad is not my friend.
Be sure. You might have.
Because of my body, half of my body is already in the truck. Pretty soon the other half is going to be driving down the road regardless of whether my brain is still here.
Here it is. Yeah, I'll share it with you right now.
In other words, I'm getting distracted. Getting tired.
I'll share the following with them.
Alright, I just need to get to. What, we need it, am I doing that? Oh, because I'm not looking at the stock share. Okay. Here we go.
He's in the front of your inbox.
I got it. Okay. Are you all right with me sharing this one on, or do you want me to make the changes first? Okay.
I'm guaranteeing this is leaking.
A hundred percent, right? Verification of transparency. Okay, so. I'm on, I'm on. Guys, I'm up on the screen. Monthly evaluation workflow. To ensure consistency and timely feedback during evaluation month. The following process will be followed. Distribution of evaluation tools, evidence, the tools for evaluation, str- shared drive. And evaluation process will be prepared. And distributed. Prior to the first meeting of the month. So that board members are prepared to discuss and meet. Are prepared to discuss. During. The first regular. Period. This should say during. During. The first regular board meeting of the month. In which an evaluation is scheduled, board members will meet in executive session. This is not accurate. Okay. This one should probably. First. Okay, guy, if you look on the big screen. I am going back to what we were talking about during the second meeting of the month prior to an evaluation. The timeline of the evaluation will be discussed by the board so as to implement the proper evaluation process. Uh, the following month. Second step. Evidence. The tools for evaluation, the shared drive and evaluation process. Will be prepared and distributed prior to the first meeting of the month. So that the board members are prepared to discuss during the first regular meeting of the. Should. During the first regular board meeting of the month in which an evaluation is scheduled. Board members. Will. Be able to meet in executive session to. Have any. Necessary. Superintendent. What's a superintendent? Superintendent. What else do we need to say in that guy? During the third regular board meeting of the month in which an evaluation is scheduled. Board members will be able. To meet. In executive session to have any necessary others, evidence presented by the superintendent. And. Questions.
I need to see the top. Beginning.
Distribution.
During the second meeting of the month. Prior to the evaluation month, I don't understand that. So, you know.
So that's basically what I'm saying is like the meeting today. We are discussing the timeline for what the evaluation month is going to be. And that normally would happen in. The second regular meeting. Of the month. So technically, if we had been a little better aligned. Last meeting on the sixteen. We should have had a timeline discussion. For the evaluation starting. For October.
We're already quite.
But we're, but we're doing a work session and so that the discussion is happening today. Rather than at the regular meet. So then. That me, I'm outlining because that's what. Lane was trying to get done here and we're clarifying.
What's the second bullet?
So the second bullet says evidence. The tools for evaluation, the shared drive. And evaluation process will be prepared and distributed. Prior to the first meeting of the month. So that the board members are prepared to discuss during the first regular meeting of the evaluation. So what that is saying is that. What Lane is going to be giving the board this Friday. Prior to. The first meeting of the month, he's going to be giving us the. Evaluation instrument, all of his evidence, the drive. Whatever we need. And that's going to happen before the first regular meeting of the month. Then it says here. During the first. Regular board meeting of the month in which an evaluation is scheduled. Board members will be able to meet in executive session. To have any necessary evidence presented by the superintendent. And questions regarding. Evidence. Answer. Does that make sense so far? I can't put this. He just wanted me to hit him. I haven't done it in a long time and he wanted the evidence. He wanted the evidence of me physically assaulting him.
Is this, are you putting, are you putting this into work with Chad?
No, this is Lane's documents.
I don't like Google.
I don't know, I've worn it on my computer. Here.
Okay, I don't, um.
Okay.
Well, let's just put together.
So this, so guy. The document that is in. Our, um, packet. This one. This one. Is what I'm working on fixing right now.
We revised it.
That's what we're, that's what we're revising right now. Is that one?
We get the same.
Okay, so right now I have, I have revised. Under number one, distribution of evaluation tools. That. Process. Now I'd like to move on to completion of evaluation feedback. So completion of evaluation feedback, board members will complete their data entry. During the time period between the first and second meetings of the month. I think that is accurate. Because that gives us two weeks. After executive session, after you've given us all the evidence. To be able to. Do our individual feedback, et cetera.
Ours is the evening one.
Right here, I think, I think. Lane, I think where. We're getting confused here is it says, following the second meeting of the month. The board will meet in executive session. It should be during, during, not following. During. The second meeting of the. Evaluation month. The board will meet in executive session to provide. Verbal and. Written. Feedback to the superintendent. So essentially that gives us until the. Twenty first of October. To have our evidence done. Since you like dates.
Yeah. I already put my phone away, so.
Okay. It is the twenty first, right? I was trying to do that.
Yes.
Okay. Then number three. Says review and discussion during the second regular board meeting. Of the evaluation month. The board will review. And compile. The evaluation feedback, discuss findings. And provide collective feedback to the superintendent. So that would be, which is what we have somewhat done in the past during that second meeting. I mean, that's, that's it. You didn't put anything in there. Mister Widener about us giving you written. Or are you responding? You didn't put anything about that. Board members, our policies state that we give Mister Widener the, the feedback. And then he has an opportunity to respond to the feedback and write. So I, that is not in the review and discussion. That would need to be. But you did that with formative last year too.
I think I did last year.
Because we only did one formative last year.
Yeah.
So you don't feel the need for written or formative? You would prefer only summative?
Probably be the summative where you would talk about. The contract extension.
No, that would be at the second formative.
So then.
That would be March.
You probably should put that on. That in March, there would be, be a feedback.
So the second formative. But you don't want to for the full formative? We don't have to put that on there right now. It are policy states that you can give us feedback.
Yeah.
So this is, this is helping us with this timeline right now. So board members, questions, comments, concerns about this timeline. So since Mister Houdamio prefers dates, what we're saying here. Distribution of evaluation uh will be happening. This Friday, October third with the agenda for the meetings, the board packet, et cetera. So that's, that's gonna be a lot. That's gonna be a lot. And then October seventh, we'll have executive session where Mister Widener can give us. Any presentation he feels he needs to about his evidence during the executive session. We can have any questions that we have about the drive, anything needed during executive session. Then at the October twenty first meeting. We would have executive session again where we can give him. Results. Of. What we have, what we have scored. So that gives us essentially until the twenty first as a board. To score and evaluate. Does that make sense, board members? I think so, because we're trying to streamline and, and get this since we're gonna. Do three evaluations in a year.
Do you want the superintendent's response before the November second board meeting?
Well, I think that we can discuss that. The seventh, don't you, board members?
November fourth, sir.
All it says is that you are given the opportunity to speak both formal and. For a form of case and summative.
Yeah, we can just add that.
And. The policy. Reasonable time to respond to the evaluation. So you could decide when you do that.
Okay.
So. That means that. We're gonna get. A product. This Friday. On Tuesday, we're gonna, if there are any questions left. We'll seek to clarify. And then from that point on, we have two weeks. To complete it. We did not save was the deadline for completion. So that we know that the, there should, there should be a deadline. When we complete the.
The Friday before the meeting.
Something and then, um. I don't know the technology that it's going to be that will consolidate.
During.
Whether or not there's a consolidation or not, I don't know. Uh, this sounds like an individualized evaluation. I don't prefer individualized evaluation, but for it for some of the evaluation has to be singular. Evaluation, there should not be individual. Summit of evaluations because we'll run into the same problem we had last night, then you have no idea who you're going to respond to. You could respond to those who give you higher rating or lower rating. Same thing here, I'm not sure.
Well, I think that we decided as a board, I, I, I think. That we decided that formative was still gonna be individual, but that summative was gonna be one voice.
Longboard.
Yeah.
I'm not sure on the necessity of having you make a presentation. If you're saying that all the information is supposed to be in the drive this coming Friday, then. Then I will incorporate what you say into it. Um, juicy.
Good point. I mean, we have, we asked.
You've already filled it out. No, I can fill it out. We just have, uh, we've seen. And, um.
Then hold on, I'm gonna ask for clarification on that. Good point, sir. Are you gonna be continuing to add? Through, through, you know, the next couple of weeks, you know?
Probably.
Because maybe Guy, that's something that we need to take into consideration too, that. You might tell us on Friday that you have four meetings scheduled with, you know, different tribal entities. But then before October. What's that Friday?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth. You have, you know, you've got agendas and minutes and everything for those meetings. So I think that we as a board would wanna see that you're continuing doing that. I could be wrong.
All I wanna know is when I leave the meeting next Tuesday. I will have that period of time to complete my evaluation. That's all I'm concerned with.
October seventeenth.
Is, and so by the seventeenth.
You going to?
So the deadline is the seventeenth. No, what I'm saying is that the, that the last time that he puts anything in there has to be set. Can't be added anymore. It has to happen at a certain time.
This is the feedback we need. We can determine that during the executive.
Yeah. Why?
No, not the date, sir. He was asking who is going to do a compilation of the voices. Because the way he set up. And I know he will finalize this in the next few days. The scoring, the scoring will be automatic, the way you have it done on each individual. Tool. So what he was asking is if we're doing a singular voice, who would compile everything? Would I do that? Would you do that? Would Emily do that? Would Walter? Would Ron? Would Chanda? You know, I mean, but you, you get why he's asking that. And I said, I said, we could determine that during executive.
If we're saying individualized, what's the point in doing consolidated?
That's what we were asking.
The purpose of doing consolidated means that you're averaging ratings across all of them. So then that can be done by the, by the tech, by technology. It actually can.
Providing instruments.
Can compute that so that you have a overall average for these seven categories. So that's a consolidation. However, if there are additional comments or that a board member wants to have included. Does the, does, do the individual comments that a board member makes on a particular indicator. Of being a part of this evaluation. So if I have a comment on one point two. Will you see the, or will we all see that? That's the same thing we had with last spring. We all did ratings and then we were asked to do comments. So are you, are we going to provide comments or we're just going to do ratings?
The, the.
I think the ratings tells it more, Chad.
The.
Yeah.
The instrument that Roxy provided. That we have.
Yeah.
Taken. And moved from had space for comments.
Well, does your, is this, does this technology, the one that Isaac's doing, provide space for comments?
Well, Lane, you're doing it.
Yeah, I agree.
He, Isaac is doing, Isaac is, has helped with the drive, not.
To get it to.
Not the instrument.
There is, there is feedback under each.
Indicator.
Yeah, yeah.
Just not, it's not on the one that we just did because mine was just a claim Google document.
It was on.
Yours, yours, the one that will be updated, it is, it's on there. Yours has room for comment on that.
I guess. The.
So this one, just looking. This one, Guy, in your, in your book, the one that looks like this is the one that will have the scoring. And then you click what it is and then you have the ability to give feedback.
And then on the bottom, it has extra.
And then, and it. It creates, it does automatic scoring. That, that one, that one is the one that has all the automatic. But. I also said, Mister Widener, you might share. A, a regular document that could be printed. As well as the dropdown one.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, if we're, we're talking about the ease of use for the board members. You know, if, if Ron.
Pretty easily. If, if Ron wanted to sit here and say, okay. Three.
Yep.
Four.
And I liked this evidence.
Yeah. I'll, I'll fix a version, a written version too.
Beautiful. So I like your point, Guy, about what is the deadline that we're gonna pick for, for you submitting evidence? We all are. When do you want the last day for you to submit evidence? Probably a week, a week, like October tenth. Cause that would be a week before. Scoring is finished.
Yeah, that would be, that would be fine.
Cause that's a week after the meeting.
Ten days. Leo, when is the board meeting, the second board meeting, so?
The twenty first.
So. Look at that.
So we said the due date would be the seventeenth. Okay. So that's the due date. So evidence, when, when do you think it would be best for him to stop putting evidence in? Cause if we want the, if we want everything completed by the seventeenth. Let's be real, we all know that it might take us an extra day or so.
He said ten.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop adding my ten. Kind of like, yeah. And that's.
I want to start on the eighth. Well, I just, um. Choose the date.
Okay, so the seventeenth will be the, the due date for the board to be completed. Giving us a couple of extra days in case anything comes up.
Correct.
But we're saying that the tenth will be the last day to update your drive. Because that means that gives you a full extra week from Friday to add anything additional you needed there.
Perfect.
Okay?
So.
I'm gonna design it sort of looks similar to.
Beautiful. Sir, what were you gonna say? Cause we, we're gonna do.
Nothing.
Okay. Board members, consideration of approval of the superintendent formal evaluation instrument. That we worked on tonight. Superintendent, why recommendation?
I recommend that we approve the superintendent evaluation. Instrument.
All right, board members, is there a motion to approve? The formative evaluation instrument?
I'll move to.
Excellent. Is there a second?
What?
Is there a second? All right, it has been moved by Mister Ortiz and seconded by Dr. Archambault. To improve, to approve the superintendent formative evaluation instrument that we worked on this evening, discussion. Hearing that, we shall proceed to roll call vote. Mrs. Turley, please.
Doctor Archambault?
Yes.
Mister O'Neill?
Yeah.
Mister Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
I, the motion carries announcements.
Uh, a couple of quick announcements. Um, we have our next regular board meeting, October seventh. As we were just talking about, um, the end of the first grading period is October tenth. Probably the date we were just talking about, October thirteenth, the district is closed for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Seems like that's cool or, or will not be here that day. It will be closed. With government, but good there.
Yes.
Yes. And then future agenda items, um, we, we get some of these things moved up and then they, they come back or, or still on it. Uh, still wanna talk about safety and security. We still wanna make sure that we have a decent update on our special education. Next week, you'll, you'll be the new special education director. The, the, um, in an SBA policy service advisories that we continue to update. Federal programs update. That includes the tester information and update there. GCCs policies and systems updates and our financial report for the year twenty four twenty five. It goes to the, we left up there, right? Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Excellent. Good reminder.
There, Chen has already started on it, so they're, they're there.
Excellent. Superintendent, why here, sir, recommendation?
I recommend that we adjourn.
Excellent. Board members, is there a motion to adjourn as amended?
So what?
And the second.
Second.
All right, David Tehran, all right, it's a Walter.
We gotta get involved in the draft.
Okay.
For reelection.
Right, that's. It has been moved by Dr. Archambault and seconded by. Mister Houdamio, she adjourned the meeting as amended. This is for legal help, please.
Doctor Archambault?
Yes.
Mister O'Neill?
Yes.
Mister O'Neill?
I, the motion carries, we're adjourned at ten fifty. I, the motion carries for adjourned at ten fifty four P M.